I can't even hardly tell. Okay, I called the meeting to order, City of University Heights City Council Meeting, Tuesday, February 14th, 2017. We're in the Community Center of One University Place. And I called the meeting to order and there are five council are present. And first order of business is approval of minutes. And does council want to go through each one? Are there a lot of... Or do you want to do each one separate? We'll just go through each one. And then I would like to use unanimous consent if it's okay with the council for more efficiency. And so first one is approval of minutes, January 10th. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, the minutes are approved by unanimous consent. And then we have January 19th, special meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to January 19th? Hearing none, the minutes are approved by unanimous consent. Then we have February 6th, special council meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to February 6th? Hearing none, the minutes are approved by unanimous consent. Okay, so first, second order of business is presentation and review of FY '18 budget.
You need to be like right here in front of them.
Like right, like this? Oh my gosh, you guys.
Exactly how you need to be.
Okay, presentate.
You can tilt it down, not the whole thing, just the top part. There you go. That will make it more pointed towards your mouth.
I'm sorry. Presentation and review of FY '18 budget. Jim Lane and Steve Cool, welcome, Steve. Would you like to start tonight?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Okay. I have to eat this, huh? Okay.
I'll make it a little taller for you.
Okay, thank you.
Does that help?
Okay, that good? Okay. All right, I'm just gonna take about five or 10 minutes and just go over some of the major changes, some of the more significant items. Keep in mind that probably about three-fourths of the budget material has come from all of you. I've worked with Jim over the last two weeks and we've gone over the information, put everything together, filled in the blanks for the small remaining items throughout the budget. And I think we're ready to proceed here. What I've got, first thing is the budget worksheet here, which has three columns. Actual fiscal '16, budget for the current year we're on and proposed for next year. I'm just gonna pretty much concentrate on the right-hand column here, the proposed amounts for fiscal '18. Starting right off the top here, property tax. Property tax, total gross levy before it's broken down into the utility excise and the state backfill is about $805,000. Quickly, I want to jump to the very last page at the very end, which I think is the 10th page of it. Net valuation for tax levies for fiscal '18 taxable value is 74 million. The year, the current year we're on right now is 70 million, so we had about a 6% increase in the total taxable valuation. By the time we have calculated the amount of taxes needed either through levy or actual amount, we're actually looking at a levy rate of approximately $10.80, which is about 29 cents less than the current year. So the valuation increase is going up at a good rate that we can keep the levy rate altogether at about as low as we can keep it. Also on the first page, in the middle of the page, we have one new revenue source. That's the tax increment financing, the TIF revenues on the incremental value of this property here. The information from the Johnson County Treasurer and through the state of Iowa is we're expecting about $47,500 for next year. Going on to the second page, this is also in the revenues, about halfway down. Special assessments, the OUP special assessments of about $29,250. What that is, is those are the assessments to the others that will pay for the larger share of the bond issue. Was that 600 and...
625.
625 out of...
It included the road construction and intersection improvements, those types of things.
So we've got that. Also at the bottom of the second page, the bond proceeds, 267,500. That's anticipated bonding for the Olive Court work and also visioning project. Going on to the third page, this is the start of the expenses, capital projects. Once again, two major projects planned for this coming year, Olive Court reconstruction and the visioning projects. Let's see, we're gonna go up, move down a few more pages. In the police department, this would be on about the fifth page at the very top, we have a budget amount of $45,000, which is the approximate cost of a new police car and certain other equipment to go with it. Next page, at the very bottom in the transit section, seat service has been reduced from $8,400 down to $1,000. That is $25 per trip. And so far this year, we only have less than 10, I believe.
Seven trips.
Seven trips, yeah.
Seven trips, eight. This was suggested by the seats people, which was very helpful. Because we were paying, we were paying $8,000 annually in the past. And so we went to a per unit or per use basis. And you know, last year, this time we had seven, last year we had about 22. At $25, it's a hard way to get to 8,000. So we were benefiting, you know, we may have people move in to places like this and we end up with a lot more. So one year we may come in here crying in the blues because we got burned. But anyway, I think in general, this is gonna work out pretty well for us.
Okay, I'm going on to the next page in the culture and recreation. This is not quite halfway down. We have the community center operating expenses. In the community and economic development, we have two new items, housing funds set aside, which is 5% of the TIF proceeds. And then the next line, the OUP developer rebate is the remainder of the TIF money.
But we also, we have to, we still have a little calculation to do on that, I just remind folks, because part of that is a debt levy on this, on this purchase that we did. And which, when we did the change, they agreed that they would pay, that we would pay that out of debt levy. So that number will be a little bit lower as far as what the rebate goes. But the total would, will still be about the same.
Okay, let's see. Let's see, one item on the, in the city administration, on the next to last page in the city hall, obviously, city hall rental, this would be for the old space, no longer needed, so we have zero there. And then on the last page at the top is the debt service, and that's the split between the city share and the rest of the development share. This will be the first, first payment on that, new bond issue. And the, also, this coming June is the last payment on the old street bond issue, so.
We've already made that payment, Steve.
Oh, have you?
Yeah.
Okay, good, good.
It saved us about $1,200 worth of interest for the year. But there is a payment, there is a payment in June, on the, this June, on the bond, which we're aware of, the new bond, so.
Oh.
It's small.
Okay. Yeah, interest only, I think it was, or something, yeah. That was pretty much what I wanted to bring to your attention, the major changes and some of the most significant items in the budget. For the most part, a lot of the revenues and expenses are somewhat similar between the two and the three-year period. We're not really expecting any major changes on those, so.
Any questions for Steve?
Well, I would just add a couple of things. We did include community center rentals at zero this year, I mean for next fiscal year, but we may get some of that. So that would be a, we may get a gain that we could expect some. I have no idea what that would be. We should talk about police car purchase. Chris walks out, we're supposed to talk about it, so anyway, see where he's going. We have $650 in for the farmer's market, and I think Sylvia will talk to that during her discussion, so we don't need to go with that at this time. Reminder that the final budget will be submitted next meeting, and that comes on the 14th and we submit it on the 15th, so we'll try to hammer out all those changes at that time. So Chris, do you want to talk about the police car purchase?
Yeah. Is this working?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just that the Crown Victoria is one of our oldest cars now.
It has 118,000 miles on it and a lot of hours, 8,000 hours, and it's a lot of that idle time, 8,000 hours of idle time, which is pretty hard on the cars. It's had a lot of problems with suspension and that kind of thing, so we have a lot of money that would need to go into it for repairs. It's about, come to five years, six years, which is kind of the cycle we have been on for completely moving out a new car. Does that answer the question? Any questions about it?
Well, you want to talk about this lease?
Oh, the lease option, yeah.
We've always done a outright purchase in the past.
The, Charles gave us Ford in Des Moines, has some options for leasing on a, specifically for a government lease, so the, the bank that's doing it doesn't take any money out other than the interest and the, I'm sorry, the Ford dealership doesn't get any money based on the lease. And I put, I gave the several options of the lease, I set it out on your table there. They have a five-year lease, which would be about right for the, you know, the full life of the car with the department. The interest rate is around 4.2 for five years, and then that would just extend it over several fiscal years budget instead of putting it all in one. There are three options. One of the ones that seemed to make the most sense to me is on the second page, option one. You'd have the lowest interest rate they offer would be 4.28 for five years, and then there would be no down payment for the first six months, which would put this into the next fiscal year. So we'd be able to replace the car that's on its last leg now and get it into the next fiscal year as well.
I have some questions for you. Chris, can you tell me right now, currently how many vehicles UHPD owns?
Three.
Three vehicles. Can you describe the rotation of the use of those vehicles? Are they used all on the same day or different cycles or different patterns?
Yeah, it's, it depends on the shift. I mean, the morning shift usually uses the SUV, the 2015, I believe, 2013. And then the Taurus is used at night, so it's fairly even wear, I would say. And then game days, which aren't that frequent, are, you know, we're using everything.
Can you tell me a little bit more about idle time? How does that happen?
Just being on patrol, sitting, not being on patrol, but sitting stationary.
With gas running or the motor running?
Yeah, yeah, running radar, you have to do that for the computers, for air conditioning in summer for heater and heating in winter. Generally, at least my new policy is we don't, you know, we don't leave it running if you're in the office, of course, but if you're out on a street somewhere, you would, you would have it running. It wouldn't make sense to shut it off and turn it back on again. All your computer equipment would go down, you'd have to reconnect everything, it, you know, it would save a lot of, saves a lot of time having it running, which turns into safety time, you know, if you have to read details about a call or something, you don't have time to get everything back up and running, so.
So the computers are sourced to the electricity generated by the gasoline?
Well, they're bat, I mean, yes, they're battery powered, so there's some time, but yeah.
And this is the, the car with the most miles?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the oldest car, Crown Vict.
Okay.
That's also the car, I believe, that was crashed and sort of demolished partly a year or so ago.
Yeah, it was involved in a high-speed thing that wasn't exactly approved, and it caused a lot of damage to the rear end axle.
Oh, and a high chase that was not approved? What about that?
It, it wasn't a chase, it was an employee that was fired.
I see. And what are the repairs costs associated with this Crown Victoria?
Uh, let's see here.
Ballpark estimate will work for me.
I, I thought I had a list here. It looks like $3,600 for the suspension work, and that's only the suspension problems or a lot of other things going on. And I imagine it's gonna need one of its, whatever, the 100,000, 50,000 mile, whatever the next service period would be.
Okay, but those are, those are standard maintenance, right? You know, I service my car every 5,000, 10,000 miles. Okay.
Right, your car also doesn't experience the same wear and tear that the police car does. And if you drive around in this thing, you can hear it sound like it's gonna fall apart. Doesn't get over, I wouldn't take it over 80 on the interstate.
Now, I do have one last question. Why do we need three vehicles? If, how many, how many cars are on patrol at one time, on one shift?
Depends on the day, when we have reserves and different officers working, we have two on the street. And then there's usually one car for the chief of police. You would want that because ability to respond to a call, if officer gets involved in a serious call, you don't want them driving their personal car to the scene. You have to have some ability to respond quickly.
So at least there, there's some overlap with two vehicles out on, on patrol?
Yeah, many days. And when we work the GTSB, the Government Traffic Safety Bureau, one person will be in one car, one person will be in another car. Yeah, it's two to three. Some days it's just one, but it's usually two.
Okay. All right. That's it. Thank you very much for informing my questions.
Is, is the lease and the purchase both from, is the lease and the purchase estimates from the same car company, the same dealer?
The lease is through the bank that isn't owned by the dealer, but the purchase price is through that dealer. It's the lowest we could get because it's the state contract for law enforcement.
I see.
So that's been bid to the lowest price for the state.
So the master agreement, right?
Sylvia, I have my turn now, and you can have it after I'm done. Thank you. How much is saved on the state purchase? And what I'm thinking about, I'm not being critical, is buying locally is always good, and how much is saved by dealing with the Gabus dealership?
I don't have that number with me. I could look into it. All I can tell you is it's the cheapest price because it's the state contract.
Chris, can you spread that information with all councils, all councillors, please?
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
And is, I don't recall, I don't know how large a Crown Victoria is anymore. I know what it was in 1976. And is it a huge car like it was then, or is it a mid-size?
I think it's pretty small now. It's a small stand.
Okay, what I want to get agreement with, within the council is that we will lease, pursue the leasing, which would impact the budget. What we have tended to do is every two years, we purchase a new car to replace one, you know, and that's usually 40, $45,000. We, we have in the past budgeted that, tried to budget that each year, but then when you do the reconciliation, it doesn't make any difference. So, because we're on a cost basis with the budget. So this would probably, you know, this would take our, we'll pursue this with, with Chris in the next month, so we'll come back next meeting with a number of different, the council's agreement on going ahead and going with the lease. So that's what, that's what we're really looking for today, so.
Does the lease have a purchase, an option to purchase?
Well, that wouldn't be through the lease. You mean as you're going along, if you wanted to purchase it?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. At any point, you could just buy it outright. It's, and it is a lease to purchase, as long as that's clear.
A lease to purchase agreement.
And if we then would lease the next one, I mean, we're just gonna have an ongoing cost.
And makes, and it makes it, basically makes an annual appropriation of the same, of roughly the same amount?
Yeah.
Okay. That makes sense to me.
That seems reasonable to me because there's no point in anybody else using our money if we could use our money.
Yeah.
Your recommendation, Jim, is to lease?
Yes.
And what's the council consensus? I'm, I'm in agreement with the leasing.
I, I don't have...
I said Dottie and...
Okay.
We're nearing the end of my budget competence, so yeah, lease sounds good.
I want to get the numbers right on exactly what that could end up being.
And then you're going to answer the council's questions over the next...
Yeah.
The only, the only question I would have, and I would let Jim make all the ongoing decisions about this, but if there's only minimal cost savings by going to the Des Moines, I would ask that you look into a local vendor if possible.
We have a month to...
Yeah, and you could, you could try and negotiate locally, you know, with the same deal or a little less and see if we'd come up with an offer.
And just in case you want to look it over between now and I get you more information, this is, this is the cost and this would be the lease proposed with that dealer.
Okay.
Chris, I would strongly encourage you to keep your bidding quotations as you go through this process. That would be important for me to, at a later time, potentially ask you about those. And that's just to see what type of bids you obtained.
Do you have anything else, Jim?
Yes. Wages for the police, you're recommending 75 cents. I think we just need to address that as a council. 75 cents a person, per officer, I'm sorry, 75 cents per hour, per officer. In the past, it's varied, just for council input. Sometimes we've done it on a percentage basis, sometimes we've done it on a per-hour basis.
What is the current hourly rate? I guess, I don't have any of that information.
For, for each officer or which do you want?
It would, I don't need each officer, I just need each, I don't know if it's like Sergeant One, Sergeant Two, Sergeant Three.
Oh, no, it just varies by the time on, so it's from 19 to 24. $19 an hour to $24 an hour, that's the range.
Speaking for myself, I don't have enough information to make a decision tonight. I did see the email that came today, and I'd like to see a little bit more data and information, especially how we benchmark with respect to other small forces. Obviously, I'd like to hear from my council peers what your opinions are with respect to comparing staff wages to Coralville, North Liberty, Iowa City, Cedar Rapids, Marion, all those other places. I'd like to hear some discussion around that so that, that could inform the information I have.
So you, you want to know the hourly rate for basic officers at the other departments?
Sure. And in particular, those officers that have comparable job descriptions to what we're doing here, which is significantly different than a high-crime area or a high urban dense area. So I, I, that's why I'm not prepared to make a, you know, yea or nay or neutral tonight.
You have information about that now, don't you?
Yeah. I mean, I don't have all of those cities you listed, I do have some information. I don't know if you want to...
That would be helpful.
That's okay, I don't need it tonight. You can email it tomorrow morning, that'll be just as good.
Okay.
Thank you.
You wanted to keep going, Jim?
Well, for the, I just would say for the purpose of the budget, at this point, we're going to assume we're making that increase because that's what was submitted, so. And we still have the opportunity to change it next month if we need to. So anyway, that's kind of where we are down there.
The, the only thing that I would add, and I don't know how difficult this is, or, is that if some of this raise, this increase, was linked to merit, it would be helpful too, in my mind. So it's just not an automatic thing. There's some inducement for those who are doing particularly well to get more.
Yeah, my concern is really a competitive agency pricing here because we want to retain the quality officers that we have now, that we have trained and that we are pleased with their performance. And we do not want to be the breeding ground to send them to another department which has nicer salaries. So we need to be on top of that.
Anything else, Jim?
Well, the only other item I had, Josiah and I have talked about, the, there's two items for pavement repairs, one on Highland, one on Collier at 22.5. I don't think we're, we can sequence those next in spring of '18 if we need to, so, but we're, I think with moving on the lease that like we're doing with the police cars, that will put the budget basically at a neutral point. Might be a slight surplus, but not anything big. And so I'm not going to try to make that, move one to another, and we'll make that decision when we get there in this spring of '18 and reviewing that, so.
And that's on Josiah's report here?
Well, it's, it's not on his report, but it's in the budget that way.
I mean, this, I guess it's...
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's 22.5 for two different, two different projects, one on Collier, one on Highland. And we'll leave them in there at that point. Now, that's my question, I didn't know what else the council had.
I have a couple of questions with respect to the budget and the UHPD police force. Chris, can you tell me presently how many on-staff officers you have, full-time and then part-time?
Full-time paid, four, four full-time.
Four full-time?
And one part-time.
And one part-time. Your budget recommendations reflect how many new hires and in what category?
Calculating new hires. It's four 30-hours per week for part-time. So, I mean, it doesn't really matter how many new hires, I would say probably keeping two part-time, because I mean, that hourly time could be split up, but...
Does your budget reflect any increases in full-time staff?
No.
But that's assuming we, assuming we have a fleece cheap and four other...
Right, right, yeah.
Does this budget for UHPD account for the reserves that are customary to the football season?
In the dollar or $2 per year they're paid, if that's what you mean?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
How many do you have contemplated for, for football season?
Hmm, I'd like five. We have three right now, two just joined us.
I'm sure I heard that they get paid a dollar a year or $2 a year.
Right, the budget is $24 a year.
It's $2 a year. We're twice, we're twice the state required, yeah. State says you have to pay them at least a dollar a year to make them an employee so that they're covered for liability, so we doubled their salary.
You gave them a raise.
We doubled their salary.
It was a raise, huh?
Generous.
Right, thank you.
Okay, Steve, we'll...
All right.
Work on this and get this to the council for the next approval. The major item will be the, the leasing with Chris, so we'll work that out.
And then you'll send all of that to the council?
Yeah, we'll send all that to the council, plus Chris will send the wage, the salary stuff.
Okay, good, good. That's everything, right, Sylvia? You want to...
Yeah, I, I think Chris is really good at getting back to his, okay, good.
I want to thank everybody for their help.
Folks that ask their questions.
We, we got all this done. Louise can reminisce of how we used to do it, and it's, it's going very well, and I appreciate everyone's efforts on this. It's nice to come out with a budget that, with a lower mileage rate and hopefully a slight surplus, so we'll see how we do.
Be sure to tell that to Rich Schmidt when he talks about his valuation, how much his valuation went up. It's at a lower rate.
Yeah.
Steve, you have anything else? We'll see you next month?
Yeah, the, just the schedule for publishing of the budget, oops.
Right.
Next month's meeting is the fourteenth, is that right? Okay. That will be the public hearing. I will have all of the paperwork ready to go, because it will have to be at the county auditor's office the next day on the fifteenth, so I'll work with Chris on, make sure we get the publication proof timely and everything. Publication of the budget in the newspaper will be by Friday, March third, I believe. Press citizen would need that, I believe, Monday or Tuesday at the latest. So, if there's any final adjustments, final tweaking on these numbers before we have it published, I would probably need it, the final changes by, let's see, next Tuesday is twenty-four. Probably next Thursday, the twenty-third. That'd give me enough time to get the budget file ready and everything.
We try and give him four days if possible, so just factor that in.
I'll try to, yeah.
Great, thank you so much, Steve.
Okay. Yeah, otherwise, if anything else comes up, you know, between now and next month, you know, certainly try, try and ask me, I don't know everything, but I didn't know the bond got paid off, so I need to show up more often.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I do have one other budget item to discuss, and that is the affordable housing line item that is included for approximately, gosh, seventeen thousand or so. And I'd like to know, one, I'm happy to see a line item there, two, it means that council will at some point in time decide which of the many affordable housing institutions in Johnson County might be eligible. So, I wanted to get an idea of, of that line item and the intent behind that, that line item.
The housing fund is two thousand seven hundred thirty-four dollars.
Perfect, thank you for correcting. So, the question still is outstanding, presumably that needs to go somewhere other than the budget, and I'd like to see if we can achieve some consensus, because there are some competing institutions in Johnson County, and I think we need to have a, a, an opportunity to consider the merits of, of the different, of the different entities or institutions that have these types of arrangements.
Since I do serve on the Affordable Housing Task Force, I would be happy to make a recommendation. I'll bring it to you next month if you want, or we can figure out how to schedule it farther out. I think, given consensus, I would imagine, I would likely come back with one for the Housing Trust of Johnson County, as, as the group that can take those funds and administer them most efficiently, but I'm, I will discuss that with the rest of the Housing Task Force.
Well, and I just wanted to make sure that this council was provided an opportunity to discuss, because, you know, the budget isn't just solely the responsibility of one individual on council, we are all legally obligated under Iowa code to look after it. And I just wanted to make sure that this is a new item, it's a very meritorious and excellent item, but it still requires that somebody, you know, own up to what exactly is the intent and what are the options, and that's what I would like to see. So, thank you.
Let me make a couple comments, 'cause I, and I agree with you, Sylvia, and that's why I brought it up tonight, to make sure everyone understood it, because we, this was passed with the TIF, and then we'd kind of forgotten about it. This is based on about one point six million valuation. Total valuation will be closer to thirty million. So, if you wanna do the math.
I'm not, I'm not questioning the math, I'm questioning.
Sylvia, I'm just trying to inform people, okay?
That's what you're doing, 'cause you're looking my way and I don't know.
No, 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 I was looking at the audience.
All right, Jim.
So, we need to recognize two thousand whatever, two-four-three-seven is a drop in the bucket as to what we're talking about, so I mean, it could be ten times that.
I just happened to know right where that page was.
On a, on a per-year basis, so it is, you're right, it is significant, and we need to pay attention to it, to, to.
Right.
And work on it, so.
Well, and, and yeah, and, and you know, I'm gonna let bygones be bygones by saying that, you know, I'm very concerned that, you know, council was not of the opinion in the TIF negotiations to do justice by the low-to-moderate-income housing provisions that Iowa code, TIF provisions provide, but, you know, I'm at least happy to see that we're doing some token service at this time.
So, if I may, I pointed this out, I think, a couple of times, but I wanna mention it again. The council, at the time the TIF was, was adopted, discussed some sort of low or affordable housing assistance, when it decided to make the rebate TIF a ninety-five percent rebate. The council did not, at that time, restrict or obligate the five percent to affordable housing issues, so that was a discussion item, it's not part of the TIF agreement, and the council presently or in the future may certainly move along those lines, and if this council or other councils believe that was the commitment to the community, that's, that's the council's prerogative to treat and, treat things that way and move that way. But the council's not legally obligated to use those funds for an affordable housing purpose. The other thing I wanted to point out, and I, if I understood the comments, it sounds like there's gonna be task force for committee or somebody to look into things, but, but there's, even within the construct of affordable housing, the council would not be at all limited to established entities or, or, you know, social service or other nonprofits that are skilled in affordable housing, I mean, certainly to consult with, but the council wouldn't have to pick one to sort of benefit, the council could, you know, go off on its own or ask for some assistance and partnering. I'm assuming that those dollars would stay in the community, but I guess those things could be different.
Steve, what else could those dollars be used for?
Anything, any lawful purpose.
Lawful is brought, is writ brought?
Yes, anything that the council would, would, anything that's in your budget that you just looked at, for example, or others, other things, anything the council desired that was.
And, and Steve, could you designate different things on different years, or, I mean, do you have to stick with one or?
Yes, yes, it would be, well, now, I mean, if the council undertook some commitment,
that would, would require some ongoing, yeah, but, but the answer is yes, you can choose every year whether to allocate dollars to some affordable housing, you know, effort.
Or social services.
Yeah, or, and if you chose one particular effort one year and you wanted to use another affordable housing effort the next year, the council has that prerogative.
Thank you. So, Dottie, just to give you some background history, I raised the issue, the significant issue during the TIF negotiations that Iowa law could, could reasonably be interpreted that the construction, the TIF that came into University Heights triggered residential assistance, one shape or form, and as a result, it triggered obligations to, per a formula established at the county level, to submit certain funds to low-to-moderate-income housing projects, not necessarily here, anywhere else, anywhere else in Johnson County. The dispute was, we, the council majority decided to, on a majority basis, four to one, they decided to apply an aggressive legal interpretation that no low-to-moderate-income housing provisions applied to one university place development. As a result, it's been my contention that over hundreds of thousands of dollars are due to low-to-moderate-income housing. Hence, I'm making tonight the inference that we're giving a paltry two thousand to low-to-moderate-income housing, when we could have done better, and we could have done right, and we could have done well by Iowa law, but that's neither here nor there anymore, but that's the background information, in case you are wondering why it looks like this year we start off with low-to-moderate income housing.
Well, it isn't the amount that I was questioning at all.
No, it's the subject matter as well.
It was the, the direction of, of the funds.
No, that's, that's behind the direction of the funds.
Steve has answered it, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, it's my understanding that, Mike, you're going to?
I can, I can follow through with that.
Follow through with it.
Sure, I'll make some recommendations for this current year, and if we, I mean, I can even, if council, rest of council wants me to, I can put together something that would make it an ongoing commitment, so.
Well, I.
I don't think I'm hearing that right now.
No, I think you need to do it on.
I'm not putting much time into it, but I mean, we can if we want.
I think you need to do it on a year-by-year basis and determine what we wanna do, especially because the numbers will change pretty significantly after this year.
Yes, yes, it will.
And within a given year, I imagine that the funds, if they're significant, could be divided up in various directions.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah, so that, that's a, that's a lovely opportunity for the community.
I, having served on the task force, I, I will say, I think it's, it's much in our interest to, to fund another agency rather than try to administer them ourselves, because it's, you know, we will end up eating it through administration, and there are good programs out there, so.
Do you have a list of the programs out there?
Um, actually, we have our next meeting on next Friday, and I can, I mean, I'll get you, I'll let you know what we get from that.
Okay.
I have another question about budget, and I'm not sure when the time is to talk about it, but.
Right now?
Right, but I'm, I'm not sure when the subject matter needs full discussion, maybe now, but I, I doubt it. It may be time for the city, if it wants to make appropriate use of this facility, to have at least a part-time city administrator. I think it would help the mayor, I think it could administer the activities in this building, and if we wanna be a city, quah city, I think it would be a step in the right direction. And I'd just be interested, one, in what others think, one, if the budget would handle something like that, and if it's timely.
I'd like to add that as an agenda item in March. It warrants significant discussion, and it would be a companion to one of the ordinances that's being introduced tonight, which is competition and city contracting.
I would like to have a listing or identification of issues that would merit the hiring of such a party. I think that would be important. What are we, what are we lacking that that person could provide, or how could we look at the administration of our current services?
We don't have a chicken administrator.
Well, I'm just saying, what, what do we need to do that isn't being done, that someone could do better, et cetera?
Certainly. No, I, I think it's very timely, and I would welcome coming on the agenda in that, so.
And I can help put together some of that information. I think, Jim, you have some information from local counties, I have some interstate information that I'd like to contribute as well.
Part-time administration?
You can do an interim clerk, you can do an interim manager, you can do full-time manager, part-time, it just depends, and of course, we'll also have to look at our home rule charter to see what we are, what we can do. But I think Jerry's concern is well acknowledged, that we're now growing into a sophisticated tiny city, and perhaps it's the right time.
So, we'll put your name with that agenda item?
As well as Zemmerman.
Okay.
Fun.
Very good. Any other discussion with budget? Okay, we're ready for public input. I know some people are here that wanna speak to the council. Just come up to the microphone and you have to get really close, and then state your name and address for the city clerk. Well, Lori, we're waiting for you.
Don't go so fast, I'm worried, I was worried about this.
Go really slow?
Yeah.
No, no, I'm worried about it.
Trip and fall.
Okay, my name is Lori Enlow, and I live at two forty-two Highland Drive for the last eighteen years. And can you, is it, is the mic coming through? Okay. I'm actually coming to comment on the community center rental proposal that was put out by council about a month ago, actually, even before that, I think it was in twenty sixteen. One of the things that I noticed with the current proposal for rental is that it's more like an event center, because the shortest duration of rent, I believe, was like, was seven hours, and they also, there was also some comment on how frequently that you could rent the facility. So, for me, when I was looking at this location, one of the things that I would like to see is a change in that process, where we're allowing us to have shorter-term rentals, so that we could promote the use of the facility as a community center, so that we could have parent groups here during the daytime, we could have classes, I'm actually a, I, I work at the VA, but I'm also a Tai Chi instructor, so maybe Tai Chi, yoga, any other type of classes could be offered. Most of those teachers wouldn't necessarily need to rent anything for seven hours, you know, we're looking at a, you know, one-to-two-hour basis, and I did send the council a sample lease that I had used at a previous place that I have rented in the past. So, those are some benefits, I think, by re-looking at this as a community center, so the space can be used more often and, and help develop our community that, that we currently have. And I don't know if I would need to put in these other comments, but other considerations within a lease would be, you know, what we would charge University Heights, community members versus non-community members also, and I don't know if you would have anything like for nonprofit versus non, you know, other groups that are for profit. Those are just a couple of the ideas that I wanted to bring forth to the council.
So, you're looking at two-hour, right?
Probably two-hour blocks, 'cause that allows prep time and that type of thing.
If you had like an hour-long class, that'd give you a half hour before and a half hour after.
Right. I mean, and some people, well, some people might even just need an hour and a half, too. I mean, when you look at an hour and a half, is what I've done, and actually, when I've done rentals, I would only be charged for that direct hour. I mean, the way that I, like, I've leased from another company, I never owned my own spot, so I leased like from a dance studio, and so they would basically just charge me for the hour. So, I mean, people can work out their classes, so you could decide if you wanted to charge on an hour, you know, an hourly basis or hour and a half, you know, what increment you would wanna charge on. So, when you look at affordability.
Lori, I checked into your question, but I never got back to you, so I checked in with other cities recreational departments to see how they were managing the use of their facilities and timing and selection, and they, they have some comparable public service type of class structures, where they make available city facilities for the good of the, like you said, as an amenity for the, for the city, so I'd be happy to, to go back and bring some of that information when we do get together to discuss this, because you raised a very, very good question, which is recreation, what recreational programming will we have in place for the, for the University Heights community space?
I mean, I could even see, I think, and I, this is my first time here, actually, but is that little place out here, is that kind of a play area for kids? So, you know, people could have playgroups here, even, I mean, it's not, I mean, the park down the way is nice, but this is a nice indoor area for playgroups within our community, and I know there's a lot of young families here, so.
So, thank you for raising that.
Thank you.
Lori, you, you haven't asked for this, and if this isn't what you intend, please tell me, but we had, we had corresponded some, and it was my belief that you would like to get started sooner than later, if possible, if there was a temporary policy that would afford you the opportunity to rent this for an hour and a half to two hours.
So, I, like, right at this, like, if I, I can't say I would be starting within the next month, so I don't think there's a big rush on that for teaching with my current, with what my other current work responsibilities are, but it is something that I would look at in the future.
Okay.
So, okay, thanks, Jerry.
Would anyone else like to speak? Hi.
Hello, I'm Benjamin Cohn, in person, because Resolution seventeen oh eight is up for consideration at this meeting, and I would like to follow up on my written comments by saying that I think that Resolution seventeen oh eight definitely improves the policy and should be passed. I would propose a slight amendment to the language, what, chargeable time beyond the first one hundred dollars of staff time, I would add three words, or four words, actually, to the lawful custo, of the lawful custodian to that, and the reason is that it would prevent fee shifting for legal or I think maybe investigative to providing estimates. I don't know in practice whether that would be an issue anyways, but I think it would be, people could, who request public. would be, people could, who request public records would have more confidence if they knew for sure that they would not be incurring liability by making a request for the, uh, time that was spent in providing the estimate or providing the legal posture on the request. And, mm, I've made written comments in early January that I think goes into more detail, but that's really what I would encourage amending Resolution seventeen oh eight with those four, four words qualifying the chargeable time, and I think that would perfect the policy, which is great, and the second thing on public records that I have is actually something that Council Zimmerman proposed at the November fifteen meeting, has to do with the public records request I made on September eighteen, of which I've been provided some subset of the records for a fee of, I think, under $50. The full records that I requested were quoted at $1,400 worth of police time, and Counselor Zimmerman remarked that it would be a benefit to the council to see that information. The, so, I was hoping to propose fee waivers for information, an application process for fee waivers, where the council thinks it would help with the policy fact-finding of the city or governance decisions, and maybe as a condition of getting that kind of fee waiver, a requestor could agree to show their findings. I would be putting the information into SPSS statistics to do certain kinds of analysis. I would be happy to share those findings, uh, if, uh, other than what I've already paid, there weren't any other fees for the remaining records that I wasn't able to pay for. So, that could be, I don't know if that's a separate process, or if that could be put into the resolution, but that's public records. Next thing I would like to give comment on is traffic enforcement. I've all provided very extensive written comments in December and January on that, and I think that where there's a hundred times per capita compared to other cities of traffic citations, and as the state's chosen to classify as criminal misdemeanors, maybe a little bit more discretion could be exercised in what things get cited, or how vigorously enforced it is. I know there was a mayoral candidate who made those similar kinds of remarks, I believe Aaron Sheffield, if I'm remembering correctly, uh, and so, I don't know what form that would take, whether that would be hiring criteria for the police chief or some sort of resolution, but that's a suggestion that I have, and I think it would help make the system a little bit more just.
Benjamin, I just want to understand that a little more. I'm Louise Fromm, I hadn't met you before, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well.
And, uh, you wanted more discretion with enforcement of traffic, is that right?
That's right. And I don't really have like a bright-line rule or anything like that, I'm just saying that statistically, the records that I did get, that I've mentioned, along with what the Gazette reported, and particularly in respect to former Mayor Heitman's comment that it was for revenue to offset the cost of the police force, I think that if it was a civil violation, that would be one thing, but when you're talking about using a criminal misdemeanor system, that's unjust to do based on revenue as a criteria under, I think, pretty much any circumstances.
Can you tell us?
As a policy matter.
Is that an article that you found, and in what source?
Uh, the article was linked to in, I forget which, one of my email, email comments. I can send it out again if people think that would be more convenient. Uh, I believe that the article came about because Mayor Heit- former Mayor Heitman wanted to defend these current trends or practices, and I disagree from a policy with his comment about the revenue.
I see. Can you, um, I have, took down a couple of notes. Number one, you, let's go back to the public, um, records policy, but what section are you recommending a change?
The Resolution seventeen hyphen zero eight, I guess it was formerly numbered seventeen dash zero two, uh, the.
Is it paragraph nine, section nine?
I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry. I read the draft earlier today, uh, because the agenda attachments took a little bit longer than I was expecting.
I, okay.
But, uh, I can also provide that when I have it in front of me.
Okay.
And, uh, the third, I guess, public input I would like to give regards to the process for internal affairs complaints. I think that a civilian review board like Iowa City has would be better, uh, less conflicted potentially, and, mm, definitely, uh, I have felt that I have made a complaint using the existing internal affairs process where it's handled by the police chief, and I was disturbed to hear, actually, Abigail Brown, I guess you're in, here in the audience. So, I heard they, and I wasn't privy to this conversation firsthand, but was there an indication that maybe the city wasn't, in the council for the city, you and Steve here, uh, weren't in possession of the dash cam video until after the issue was first raised on appeal?
You don't have to answer any questions.
You don't have to answer, but I'm just, uh, I, I just know you're in the audience, so, I was told regarding this conversation when that was brought up, that the, that she had indicated that the internal affairs response that I had gotten from former Chief Stanley was inaccurate, and I'm only speaking from what I was told by my own council, I don't, you know, confirm or deny, but that has led me to give this public input as to the, uh, as to maybe doing a civilian process instead of having it be done by the police chief, that's all. And is there any questions about any of that?
I would just like to say that I, I don't know that I did make any proposal, as you indicated I did, I know it was discussed, I have some views about it. I think you raise some very important issues. It's just too bad you put the city through such hell and time expenditure in your quest. I think the points you make are important, uh, the council will take some of them up, it will be better off for that, and for that, we thank you.
Benjamin?
I thank you.
Can I have your street address, please?
Sure, that is actually in Iowa City, it's four sixty Samoa Drive, uh, actually fairly close to here, as close as many places in University Heights, but yep, Iowa City.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Benjamin? Can I call you Benjamin? I'm sorry, I can call you Mr. Cohn.
Yeah, you can call me Benjamin, I, I don't mind.
Okay, so the four, the four, the phrase that you're asking for the policy, because that's an important item of interest to me, is that you want to make sure that when the pub- any member of the public asks for records, that only the lawful custodians hour, charge or hourly rate is included in, in the estimate, right?
Uh, in what's passed through to the requestor, yes, uh, the, I guess, if it was police records like the request I made was, then that would be the time of the officers, would be the lawful custodian, and.
So I'm just going to share with the rest of the council why I'm asking, because I look, that's one, that's been one of my questions, is when will our staff internally go off to legal, to ask for legal advice at an hourly legal rate that then becomes part of the bill? And so from a accessibility to government, to making public information available, I have strong feelings that perhaps we need to be very diligent in training staff so that they know how to handle public records without having to run to legal and incurring legal bills at all times, because we can quickly exceed the $100 threshold that is free under this policy at this point. So that's one. The second one.
Can I just, sorry, can I just add something before you move on?
Yeah.
The, I just want to point out the lawful custodian of the records is the chief of police, and there are many reasons that is necessary, so, I don't, I'm not disagreeing about your point, but I, I think saying that the officer's the legal custodian is just, it's incorrect, so.
Uh, I believe lawful, the statutory language is maybe not the ordinance language for chapter twenty-two refers to lawful custodian, or it's designate her and after lawful custodian. Uh, I don't have that in front of me either, but I think the offers would, the officers would be designates of the chief of police, uh, in a way that, say, getting legal advice would not be.
Well, okay, I guess I don't want to get into that discussion here, I'm not sure what designate would be, because does that mean I can designate anyone to do that? Because I'm in, I mean, the chief of police is custodian of the records, so.
Didn't research beforehand.
Am I then required to go to the cheapest hourly rate? I don't know how that would be determined, so, I think there's more questions in, within that.
You can take those, yeah, to help the administrative side. And then the last one is you make a request, um, that we, uh, look into the discretion of citations and the discretion as to what is prosecuted, I got that.
Right.
And then the third one is, um, establishment of an internal affairs complaint process similar to Iowa City. I'm not familiar with Iowa City, so I.
It's like a citizen review board, isn't that what you're referring to?
I think so, yes.
Yeah.
And it could be any form of civilian review, I think. It doesn't necessarily have to be as many people involved as Iowa City if there's a size issue. Uh, I think it's just the de-conflict of, de-conflicting of interest to have it be civilian.
Benjamin, are you a law student?
I am.
Here at Iowa?
Yeah.
Where did you go to undergrad?
Down at the state in California where I grew up.
Okay, thank you.
In this respect, Steve, um, is there statutory language that describes in any detail the records that have to be kept, and is that a limiting, uh, factor in what information has to be provided under the information law chapter twenty-two?
There are statutory provisions that require the city to keep certain records. Those, those requirements aren't limiting factors, uh, in terms of what's available under the open records law, so if the city's required to maintain records one through a hundred, but it happens to maintain records one through a thousand, the, the city is obligated to provide records, you know, two hundred to a thousand, even though it's not required to keep them, as long as they're not otherwise confidential.
Is the city obligated to, um, organize those and deliver those to pursuant to a request, or is it only obliged to allow the person making the request to look at the records and?
So there's a couple of ways I'll answer that. The city is not obligated to arrange, um, records pursuant to a request, the city is obligated to provide records in the, uh, normal, uh, order and format that it stores them itself, you know, just like, just like Discovery and, you know, in the lawsuit, you can't, you can't go to your files in jumbo cabinet and say, okay, here you go. I mean, you have, you have to, I know, it's news, isn't it? Uh, you have to produce things in the normal course that they're kept. Um, the other way I would answer the question, it's not exactly what you asked, but in today's world, um, it, it comes up, and the statutes refer to this, but they don't really address it, it's difficult. There's a big difference between someone asking for information and someone asking for records, um, with, you know, so with databases, there's, there's information, but, but it may not be that someone can, the city could identify, well, here's the record that has what you asked for, we may not have that record. Well, don't you have a database that has the information? Yeah, we do, but, but we aren't obligated to compile from our database the information that would be responsive to your request, we are obligated to say, here are the data, you know, here's a, here's a CD, you can find it if you want to find it, as long as the software, you know, to access the data is commercially available and all sorts of things, and that, it gets a little dicey.
So it, it would, I think, behoove us to have a discussion sometime, even a working session, on the extent of the information that needs to be kept and the format under which it should be kept, to make what may be relevant information more accessible if we don't have it already, and that would imply a database, some, some way to act, some, some way to store it, access it, and provide it. And I think that would be a very useful discussion, particularly in these times where we could be asked and other departments could be asked at any time for information that we're not used to giving.
I couldn't agree more.
And I'd like to add to that discussion, the, the one element that, for me, resonates, and that is access to the records, but the cost, because the policy right now, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, is we give $100 worth of labor, materials, and other related expenses. And I think the comment tonight is about, do we as a city, as a matter of policy, want to include expensive resources that might come in to assist a query for public records information, such as legal services, who may be asked, is this document exempt under chapter twenty-two, or is it not? That could be a quick, you know, fifteen-minute question, or it can turn into a fifteen-hour question, and I don't think anyone who gets an estimate for fifteen hours of legal services from the city would be able to pay for that, for that bill. And so in favoring an open and readily accessible government, I think this is an outstanding question that we need to consider, among others that have come up tonight.
Well, and that would include a major budget item for upgrading the facilities available, uh, for a clerk or whoever to deliver that material, because now it is very costly for police to do that work, for one thing, but also, many of the records that might be requested, uh, would be confidential, so those would only be visible or acquire, acquirable by the, the, you know, interested party, the defendant or the lawyer representing. So, uh, the, the problems are really huge in terms of, it, it sounds simple, but it's very intricate.
No, that, open, accessible government is always not an easy comment.
Well, we need a budget, you're always concerned about budget, this would be a substantial budget item to improve that delivery.
But so is an open government, and that's worth budget.
Well, I would only say, I would agree, we need to be open, but we can determine if we're willing to budget to be open, or if we're willing to charge the individual to, to pay it, and that's, becomes the question as to how much we're going to pay as a city, as opposed to how much we're going to require people, if we're going to have to jump through hoops to, uh, to do that, so, that's, that's part of mine. I'm not trying to be efficient and, and spend a great deal of money for somewhat, for something that occurs very rarely also.
Do you have anything else, Benjamin?
I would respond to, uh, I guess, the comment that it's unfortunate that this has cost, it's been a howl and cost a lot of money, and it is.
I didn't say money, I said time, I think.
Time, okay, uh, we, I, that too, uh, that's been the case on both sides, uh, that, I think, is also part of what it comes down to, it goes back to the discretion comment, because the city initiated the prosecution and could have.
Excuse me, you initiated the prosecution by violating, doing a violation, so let's get, let's get.
That goes now into the.
Let's get this straight, okay?
That goes into the facts of the case, and I don't really want to talk about the facts of my individual case, because that would take more time, and it wouldn't be a policy question, it would be a, like, a dispute, so, uh, but, there, there could be prosecutorial discretion, and that's part of, I think, my comment going to, uh, what, how these traffic, uh, things are handled as a general policy, and, uh, as to maybe not prosecuting everything through, uh, all levels of whatever, however far this has gone, it's been. Uh, I've also spent seven hundred hours of my time, over $10,000 out of pocket of my money handling this on my side, so it's been helper.
I, I agree with you entirely about a review of prosecutorial discretion, and, um, I think that's something that the new, um, acting chief understands, and, uh, he will, uh. And we will, we will have more discussions about that.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? John.
Hi, John McClure, 415 Coz Avenue. Just a minor thing in a way, but maybe a big deal to some people. My ear maybe hears things that some people do and some people don't, but, um, I would like to be involved if there's any interest in pursuing, tweaking the sound system to kind of help, help out, you know. So, keep me on board.
That would be wonderful.
Absolutely, John.
That'd be wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
And then Pat, you had a hand up?
Yeah, I put down, I had three things, public records is one of them, and since that's been discussed. The other two were urban chickens and competitive bidding, which I could discuss later unless you wanted me to talk about them now.
Uh, I think now.
Okay. In terms of public records, I raised four concerns in my memo to the council back in December. Steve's revisions take care, I think, quite clearly of the formatting concern and the, the charge concern for over a hundred dollars. I also take Steve's amendment of the first section as, uh, recognizing that, that, um, board members responding to public record requests on their own, without going through this formal process, don't violate this policy, that this policy isn't intended to stand in the way of that kind of voluntary dissemination of information of the sort that I described. The last point was Mr. Cohen's mentioned, which is the, um, potential ambiguity about the categories of charges between what I called front office charges, which would be kind of the staff charges, and the back office charges that would include legal advice. There is, Steve's legal report indicates that the informal opinion of the Iowa Public Information Board indicated that the city can charge for both staff time and professional time. I understand Mr. Cohen suggests that perhaps the charge be limited to staff time and not include professional time. The policy as written is, I think, continues to be ambiguous. It talks that under a hundred dollars of staff time, but then after the first hundred dollars of staff time, they'll be charged for staff and contracted professionals. So it seems to be that if the staff time doesn't amount to a hundred dollars, there's no authority for charging professional fees, but if the staff time or to exceed a hundred dollars, then there's authority for charging professional fees. That's how I read it. I think that whether that's intentional or not, perhaps ought to be. In terms of urban chickens, as I read the, the PowerPoint materials, included a requirement that renters obtain the approval of their landlords. And I didn't see that in the ordinance draft. So I just would point that out, that if that's intended to be part of the ordinance draft, I wasn't able to find it there. And the last thing, and I'll speak a little bit more fully on it, is this competitive bidding proposal. It concerns me, having observed city government for twenty-five years. We're a small city, and I don't know whether this is a, a solution in search of a problem, but I do believe that sometimes a lot of problems started off as solutions. And the, the administrative overhead of, of this is, could be, to kind of continue the cascade of metaphors, you know, penny wise and pound foolish. As I look at this stuff and it's, you know, drawing up quotations and RFPs and whatnot, it just seems like a whole lot of administrative stuff. And I don't know that we're sufficiently big purchasing power, nor do we have the professional staff to necessarily do that. When I looked at Chapter 26, which is the state competitive bidding, it's very limited. It's talked about public improvements over a hundred thousand dollars. It talks about competitive quotes for cities over fifty thousand dollars. But it seems to envision that, that smaller governments like ours might be entirely allowed by state law to operate more informally. So, um, you know, I think that it's, it's one of those ideas that sounds really good, competitive bidding. But I just wonder in practice if it might not cause more problems than benefit. The last point I would make is, is that the state law applies to construction. Without in any way demeaning construction, it strikes me there's a big difference. And state law recognizes the difference between construction and architectural fees, professional services. I don't know that, when I, certainly I went, I just had some work done on my teeth today. You know, I didn't go with the cheapest bid, right? I went with the, what I thought would be a person who would do the best job, and I was willing to pay a little bit more to get that. So I just, particularly with a, with a municipality that doesn't have a, a permanent staff, over the years, I've been incredibly impressed with the institutional memory that we receive from our city attorney and our city engineer. They've been around a lot longer than some of the counselors and mayor have. And the thought that, that we would lose that expertise because someone would come along and, and charge a cheaper price, to me, is, is the epitome of, of being penny wise and pound foolish. I think in the long haul, that would not be for the benefit of, of the citizens of our community. Thank you.
And Pat, I want to say one thing. We all, we, you and I remember the days of when we had trouble getting one bid.
Yeah.
You know, and if we go through a big process, you know, but I mean, it just depends on the times and the economy and things. Sometimes, you know, you go through phases, and then other times they're looking for work, and we get a lot of bids, and then the price is better.
And it's, it's not some, you know, fully, a full-time person who's calling around. It's, it's, it's our elected officials, our counselors, and our mayor who are getting on the phone and calling around trying to find someone to fix the pothole. And it's just a, it's a reality of our, of our scale. So as I say, it's, it's an idea that I think is, you know, is very attractive in principle, but I encourage great caution in terms of its, its practical wisdom.
Any questions for Pat?
Pat, you're, uh, does that ordinance, um, um, leave one with the presumption that one will take the lowest bid? I know there's some language that allows not minimally, but overall, it led me to the presumption that you take the lowest bid.
I would.
If they can get the job done.
Yeah, I would, I think there is an out, there's some wiggle room there that you could compare it. So I don't think you're locked into the lowest bid, but.
That would be correct. First recital of the, of the ordinance says, lowest obtainable price and service value. Two different and distinct elements. Thank you.
Would you also add to this, that the two-year term, and which ends a lot of times with lack of continuity, would also be another reason why we?
If people get reelected every two years, or like Louise did, you know, it's not a problem.
But when we turn over as often as we do.
Well, again, if people.
How many streets and sidewalks commissioners have you seen?
Again, if we have, we have people who are willing to stand for election and the citizens are willing to reelect them, I don't know that the two-year term necessarily is a limitation.
So you got a big backyard, Pat, thinking about chickens?
I got a dead deer in my backyard. We can talk about the chief about that, but, but. I was about at our, at your last meeting to extol the, the money we send to the animal shelter.
Shelter, and then.
But they didn't pick it up.
Oh.
No, no, so.
Do they have a limit on what poundage or?
I think they only want live animals.
Not sure. I had, I had, I had a very receptive receptionist, and I went out there last night and it's still there, so.
Is it a buck?
No, it's, it's about an eighty-pound, you know, sixty-pound, eighty-pound Bambi kind of critter. No, no, it's been there for ten days, so.
Oh, my. Is there any other public that would like to speak? Anyone from the public? No?
Oh, they're still asking questions about the deer.
Okay, so we'll go on to One University Place Construction Report and Updates. We don't have anything today about that. And then Jim, you're going to discuss the community center responsibilities with the interim chief, Chris, discussing OUP shelving.
Yeah, I brought this item up because the mayor, former mayor, has taken on a lot of responsibilities to do this. And I just, and I keep getting questions from different people about what we're doing here and what we're doing there. And I just feel like we need to tie down as a council, what is left to do, who's going to do it, and who's going to make those decisions. And so tonight, I'd like to get a little clearer around that sort of thing. My old P and G term is, I don't want to do management by osmosis anymore. I want to get management by deadline. That's why I'd like to have some discussion around that with the council today. And I'd like to get Chris Anderson and, and Chris to talk about what they have left to do and to determine where else there is left, and if Shelby has made any changes to it.
Uh, so Clayton and I are working on the coat racks to get those in within the next week, I believe. And the police locker should be, I believe you said, in two weeks? End of the month? A new clock arrived and is still in the office, so that needs to be put up. We still have, from the list that Wally gave me, the signage for the windows, which I believe council is going to discuss what they want, or, or whatever you would like to do with the signage. Getting postcard, this is more for change of address, but I'm, I have the postcards ordered so that Lori, me, Chris, for the, the police area, we can start to get our addresses changed for the mail. I still am checking the old mailbox, and we'll do so for about another week or so, but I have to turn those keys into Palmore. And the new mailboxes for council and staff should be here in about ten days.
Where do we receive mail here?
Right now, the mail, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, is coming in to the front.
I, I think the ultimate plan is to have it go into that middle hallway. There are mailboxes for the whole building there. At the moment, it's coming in through the, the lobby, and USPS is dropping it through the slot in the glass. The little pass-through window, yeah. Packages and that kind of thing are more up in the air. If we're here, we get it. If we don't, they come back the next day, so there's not much of a process for that. Signage, I put up at least temporary signs for now, because the people needed to find the police department, so those are not actually glued to the window, those are easy to really, easy to take off when more permanent signs are available. Police department's pretty much set up, except for the lockers, waiting on those. What are we missing? Oh, Russ Boyer wanted me to mention shelving and ask the council's opinion. His idea was to make that center cabinet there full of shelving. They have like, kind of metal shelving with a lot of various options. You can change heights and everything easily. His idea was to put that in the center closet, and he wanted to see if the council would be okay with that. And then my final question for the council was, cell phone service is terrible in this building. I think it would be nice if the council invested in a cell phone booster of some sort for the, for the police department and the community center. I priced those, they're like five hundred to eight hundred dollars, depending on the quality you get, so that might be something to consider.
How soon do you think you need that?
I mean, we can get by. Currently, when people call me, I tell them I'm going to call them back on the landline.
Really?
And sometimes they hear it, sometimes they don't.
With respect to the shelving, I would like Clayton's opinion, since he assisted in obtaining all the chairs and all the tables, and there's, we were designed the space in order to still, still away those items, so I would defer.
Can I jump in on that? Because I've been moving the chairs in and out and stuff, because I've, with, with setting this. There's one rack of chairs with the full thirty complement right behind Stan right now, and that fits really nicely into that doorway. The extra five tables are in the middle section right now, and they lay out pretty flat. We can move those now that everything else is out of the far end. We can move all of that into the far end there. We've got the second rack right here behind Jerry, which has got, it's back here, which got one chair on it. So the thirty chairs that are here in the room right now go onto that rack. If you were going to, and I'm glad you're here, Lori, so if you were going to do a class in here, would you want any furniture in here? Sure, sure. Right. I, I, and the, and the reason I ask that is, if, if there was a time where somebody wanted an absolutely bare room, we can, especially if we get a coat rack that's going to be hanging over there. We don't have very many places that we can put a rack of chairs. We can put them back, they will fit in that corner behind that window. As you can tell, I've been here a lot. I think we might be able to get the chairs and the extra tables into the end section. I think Russ's idea of the middle section shelving is a great one. But I, I think that I'd want to be able to, and we haven't had, I mean, we can't move everything out until the police lockers come to get all the other equipment and storage issues completed. I think once we have that, I mean, I'm happy to, to, to talk with Russ about this. I mean, if you don't mind. Sure, but that's, that's just from my practical standpoint at this point.
Here? No, that was his idea for the community center. He just had me pass that on, because I was in the room.
But the use of the shelving is for what?
The community center, I don't know. I'm only relaying the message.
Well, there's enough space in here. I think, um, these closets actually.
It's all one, it's all one floor.
So that's one even when somebody, if you have to have one or two, you just lock them off. They won't have access to it. It'd be easy to provide one of those off if you wanted to do that. Until you actually define what you're going to put in there, there's no need for it.
And I want to say something, because Russ called me, and he was thinking, my interpretation, he said those chair racks stack high. So he was thinking high shelving, you know, like using space high, that's my understanding.
Yeah, I mean, we obviously have to go vertical on it, and that's not a problem, that can easily be done. I just think that there's, we know exactly what you're going to be putting in there.
Yeah.
I think, I know that transition, that's going from the last, uh, this office to this office here. It still has to be a case of just getting rid of junk. There's stuff in this closet I have no idea what it is.
Yeah.
I think there's enough space to do it.
Can you come to my house too, Clayton?
Louise?
Clayton, excuse me, what do you, what do you think about our bare walls and what should be done there?
You know, we talked about art and some other items that individuals may have that have actually lived here for a while, and could kind of have a display in this hallway here. But there are, you can see this, we moved the marquee over here, with the paint that's a lot, and it's kind of, it's not a case of when, it's not going to take very long, because it looks like it's really old. Um, there's a material called tech wall from the ham, and I was in use of that twenty-five years ago, speculating in an emergency medical pen on Cetera Avenue. It wears like iron, it's a polyfoam, it doesn't absorb anything, it cleans it with straight bleach. And it's nice about, you can put perforations in it and hang, you can pick those nails out and you don't have to worry about it. So it really helps. I think that's an area that's stopping the wet. It can help us strategically coming down this hallway. And it's really not that expensive, we're really not talking about a lot of wear. To do that, but I think that's something that I would suggest to consider, it can really help. You know, we also talked, I think, a couple days ago, talked to, um, Gary about maybe getting some walk-off carpets, at least during the winter, because all the dirt is basically going to end up right here. The space in the front, it's basically about six feet. See a few stripes, but you never know, you got, if you tell us, it's from the hall that's actually there. Unless, you know, you can get those from the Nordics for fifty bucks.
Clayton, and, and I'm getting him here from bed, you've got to talk from the microphone, because this is just dead silence right now.
So, I mean, there's some little things that, I'm talking a little bit.
Picky with regards to cleaning things, and I don't, and since there isn't a staff, is that working? No, you get. Oh, yeah, okay.
How's that?
How's that?
Okay. So there isn't really a staff that's actually cleaning the space. I know that we kind of cleaned this up a little bit, but you have an opportunity in a new space to really make it look more inviting and to keep it up. So to have some little regulations as far as, I mean, the door swing on the, on the refrigerators actually should be reversed. There's little things that just don't work as, as they are right now. But there's some softening of things that can be done here without, without, really not, without a lot of expense.
I, I had a meeting with Clayton here yesterday. He asked me to meet him here. And I think it should be a council responsibility, one person every week, to have Clayton over here because he can't help but clean while he's here. And he does a great job. It's amazing. And thank you very much. But he, he had some ideas which won't be too expensive, and we should seek to get them done as soon as possible. I made a list of those, and they're small. They make the place way more workable.
I think so. And I can get some samples of them, a harem, so that all the council people can see and understand what that material is. But it's, it's amazing. It wears like iron and it'll really soften that hallway as you're going along.
Like texture too? Do they have like a texture?
Oh, they have maybe 10,000 different finishes and colors, so definitely. It feels actually like linen. It's, it's amazing, so.
And the main purpose is to-
Well, my understanding is that we had talked about putting some displays or some art or something on that wall. So the first thing is actually to keep it cleaner so that the hallway doesn't look old and getting beat up. Secondly, acoustically, it's going to help. And then also, it's really going to allow you to put things up and down on the wall without ripping up the, the rock, basically.
And like, there's no wear and tear on the wall from just bumping into it?
You can bump into stuff all night, it's, yeah.
That'll help.
It's ballistic. Really, it, it really, it really wears well.
The, the police department, I can't believe they, I would have sworn it's just primer on the walls. Because you just, you bump into it, you have a giant scratch, ding, something like that.
And that's something, yeah, definitely, you guys should use something like that because it's, it's just going to look old fast. And we can talk about this in three months and you'll, you'll be able to see it. You know, just from the little use that you get, use that you're getting now, it's going to happen.
Well, I can't thank you enough for your enthusiasm and your creative specialty and an eye for design.
I'm charging the city a dollar next time.
Oh, we've got to bring you up, yeah, 75 cent.
Thank you for keeping on top of this and keeping us on top of it, Clayton.
So-
Thank you very much.
I think I should probably help with this too, right?
Someone needs to take- That's my point in bringing it up. We need someone to take leadership, keep us communicated and, you know, people, if Wally wasn't around, they'd call me or they'd call somebody else. And we just, it just wasn't, didn't flow very well. So that's why I brought it up. And, and I think you would do a great job at it, Louise.
And then, Chris and Chris will help you here.
Louise, may I go back a moment? We got into shelving and other things that are equally important. But the acting police chief suggested that there's a communication issue with the building. And I would suggest that we get a sense of the council and fix that as soon as possible, like now, and let him take responsibility for getting what he needs to make communication workier.
Yeah, with regards to the cell power, I think actually, a lot of the condos will have a relationship with, let's say, the media com. And if you actually call them, you may be able to get that put into the building. And so it's really kind of their responsibility to push it up as best they can. And then if you really need a booster, you can do that.
I talked to the developers and they said, no, they weren't interested. I don't know if the people owning the condominiums would be different, but the, the development team weren't interested.
But we know that they're going to have cell access within these facilities. Okay, or let's say even TV. It's going to be cable, it's not going to be dish. There aren't going to be a bunch of dishes all over the place. So I think media com would actually do that. I think we talked to them, they'd actually do that. Who are they going to use for cable in these buildings?
I think we might get some impact if Louise made that contact with the developers and see if they can help us with that.
Well, yeah, or I was going to say, wouldn't Kevin or Jeff be able to give us that information?
I would think so. I think media com is still going to probably be the source that is going to try to get in here versus Century Link.
I can talk to them about that.
Sorry, there might be some confusion. I mean, it's, we have internet, we have media com, but we don't have the cellular service. It's like Verizon being into the building is the problem.
Correct, but if it's-
It might be through Verizon.
But there's still those boosters. Let's say so if you have internet still in that aspect, you know, I mean, it's obviously concrete. So you have a bad phone?
So my, my point is, I think we should get this done as quickly as possible. See if we can get a fairly quick solution and have Chris monitor this and get it done. And Jim, is there money in the budget?
I'll find it.
Thank you very much.
I'll check, I'll, I'll do it with you.
Yeah, I mean, this is a public safety issue. I don't think we ought to be dealing with that in that kind of fashion, so. Okay, so we've agreed then, Louise, you'll work with Clayton and Chris and Chris and-
Right.
Give us an update on that. Signage is another major issue. They want us to put in a $5,000 lighted sign, which I'm not crazy about doing, so. But it, we'll see what happens.
Yeah.
Can you tell us more about that sign?
No, I can't. I've just heard the rumor they wanted $5,000.
We talked, we talked about this at a previous meeting, that they're talking about above every storefront door would be a box lighted sign, and that it'd be a City University Heights sign would match all those. And that was what Kevin had said would be roughly a $5,000 charge to have those all built.
That's been designed into the building. Whether one, whether one chooses to do it, obviously, is another question. But the vision is to have uniform signs across the building. It is pretty expensive. One of the benefits is, it is an Iowa company that's doing it, at least. The one housed in Iowa is an Iowa company. And anyway, we should at least take a look at that. We have something to be very proud of here, and why not just announce it some way and announce it in a way that is, reflects the rest of the building.
That's $5,000 per sign?
No. No, it'd just be the front.
Just the front.
One side. It is pretty hard to find the police department right now. Before, before I put the little paper sign up, no one knew to go over there.
No, that's a great idea, Chris. That makes a huge, that makes a huge difference.
$5,000, but you shouldn't, it shouldn't be hard to find.
Well, I, I think we have to be careful about putting, and I'm not criticizing you using the word makeshift, but Clayton will come and rip things down if we don't do it well. So, and I think rightfully so, so we should keep it as-
Allegedly.
We should keep it within a given domain.
And uniformity makes the whole thing nice. I agree. Okay, so we've got that solved now. Okay, we'll go, yes.
Community center guidelines, Sylvia, when do we plan to? It's been, we, we discussed having a special meeting, work session to do that. What are your plans around that at this point?
I think we should have it at a regularly scheduled council meeting so that folks have an opportunity to hear a thoughtful and prepared conversation between all counselors. We can have that ready and available for March, I suppose, or April. I think April would be a much better timeframe, given that we have budget at the next meeting.
Well, budget should be pretty fast at March.
I think budget would be pretty perfunctory, frankly.
It's longer. I would like to do a special meeting for just a working group between all of us at first, and then present it so the public could react to it. So have a work session? Yeah.
And really publicize that well, so public input could be had there.
Yeah, because, you know, if we try to mix the cake with, at that time, it's not going to happen. So I think we need to get a, you know, core document and then let them react. Do others think that's a good idea, to have a work session?
I think just to be able to hash out details first, I think that's, I think that's a good idea.
Well, you want to look at a calendar right now? And I know when I'm going to be gone. And I know Jim's going to be gone. So you know between now and the next meeting?
Between now and the next meeting, I might be here two days. So I, I, if you want to do it between now and the next meeting, which I would encourage you to do, I would, I don't necessarily feel a need to be there unless it's for one, but.
Now and the next meeting could be tough for me too.
Yeah, I'm gone just a week, but it's February 24th to March 2nd. But I have, after March, March 2nd, you know?
Well, the good news is that we have a late March council meeting, just like we had this late one too. Could we do something the week of March 6th?
I think so, because in principle, we should be discussing probably very high-level issues to be translated into operational concepts. I don't see why we should get lost in the minutia before we're able to discuss high-level concepts.
What do you mean?
For example, I think I've seen some commentary about whether the community center should be restricted only for city-sponsored event versus the use by residents and the city.
Well, but I mean, can't we draft the document and then have the reaction at the public meeting?
No, 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 I think the sequencing, focus on the sequence. We meet on a special meeting to discuss all sorts of concepts. After that special meeting, we develop a document that we present as a part of the council, correct?
The next week, yeah.
Right.
Is it okay if it's a work session? I don't think you're, you're going to be making decision then, so you don't need a special meeting? Okay? And Clayton, you had a comment? They kind of want you to get up here.
When is the front door open? Give me the unlock. Only when the, I mean, it's never open? I mean, maybe when the police are here?
Yeah, it, so far, it's been when the police are here.
Okay.
I mean, I'll do whatever the council wants, but.
Maybe you need a key or something?
No, I don't need a key. I was just curious, is there a way that individuals know that they can actually come? And, and, you know, if they want to come in, and I knocked one time on the window, just trying to see if there's someone actually in the police office because I couldn't get in. Now, that, that's fine, but I'm just thinking, down the road as we're going, is there going to be a time, maybe it's citizens are maybe volunteering to at least kind of man it in some fashion? Or that we know that it's going to be open from 8:00 to 10:00 PM or something like that? There'll be officers there or something in that fashion?
Well, you know, we added on, at least I've suggested that we need to have a serious conversation around part-time, a part-time individual joining staff.
I, I mean, it could, I mean, it's, I don't, I don't know. I, I think that if there's, for individuals that are coming in and looking for the police, that, that's their first line of defense right there. Oh, I guess it's locked, so nobody's there.
Can I, I was, like, within the next day, I've been planning to have an hour at probably, what were we saying, like 10:00 to 11:00? And then right after, 5:00 to 6:00 PM? There's an officer must be there at that time. I don't want them spending too much time in the office, but at least there would be one hour each end of the day that-
Okay. I, I don't, I mean, it's just a suggestion, it's something you guys should actually maybe approach just for the fact that individuals that are coming in, we don't know when they're going to come, you know? You know, is it open four hours a day or something like that?
We could put some hours out there for when it would be open.
I think this should be part of our discussion with the community center itself because as the weather gets better, we're going to have, I mean, we're going to want that end open so people can get in and use the bathroom if they're playing outside.
This intersects with the-
Yeah.
Minutes later.
Yeah, all of it. I mean, and I think that's why, this would be great to talk about with the work session.
So which day there, six, seven, eight? What is, I don't have my calendar.
Six is a Monday, seven is a Tuesday.
How about Tuesday the 7th?
Sounds good.
That's a week before the meeting.
That is a week before the meeting. Oh, zoning mission. Oh, good. Because we'd have booted you out, Pat, no.
Perfect. And then, do you like to meet at 7:00? Or do you like to meet earlier on a work session?
No, let's do it as we've always done, I would say, to give an opportunity for most of us to have dinner at 5:00. 7:00 o'clock would be great. I don't get in from Lynn County until well after 5:30, 6:00.
Yeah. March 7th at 7:00. There you go.
Thank you.
And I will not be there.
Right. You don't come till the 9th. Oh, maybe.
I know who we're assigning everything to.
Well, you could always call in.
I would keep that in mind.
Okay.
And I knew that, I knew this, but Lori reminded me that our next council meeting is during spring break, so.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Well, everybody's-
And as the only one here who ta, who's on vacation that week, so, yeah, that's fine. I'm, I'm here, that's not a problem.
Well, we really have to meet with that budget.
We have to meet regarding the budget. Exactly, we can't really push that back, so. No, I'm just saying, yeah.
Okay, so now we're going to, are we ready to move on? We're going to go to the mayor's report. And I didn't get a mayor's report circulated, go figure. And so I want to thank the council for my appointment, and I want to get a fresh start. And I want to talk to each council member about committees and goals and things they want, or whatever they want to talk about. And I want to do that, you know, before the March 14th meeting. And that's it. I'm quit. So I'll be contacting you. And then we'll go to consideration of proclamation, thanking Wally Heitman for his service as mayor. Is there a motion?
I move we adopt a proclamation thanking Wally Heitman for his service to the city.
I second it. I would just like to, um, I don't think it's amended, I'd like to change the name on the proclamation to yours, Louise.
We did.
Chris did.
Excellent.
Chris did that before the meeting.
Thank you.
And so you second it, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Wait, did we have discussion? Sure. Okay, thank you. I wanted to, I read the proclamation. I think that is one of the tools that a city recognizes as a means of communicating significant information. And University Heights has had a history of issuing proclamations. In particular, thank you, Louise, during your term, I remember, significant and important proclamations that were issued to celebrate and to affirm commitments that this body, as a governing body, supported as a community. And I thought that was appropriate. So I went back into trying to find out when we have issued a similar proclamation that is subjective with respect to the praise that we endowed by way of the proclamation to an individual. And it struck me, after I looked at our historical open records that are online, that this type of proclamation is unprecedented and it's odd from prior proclamations. To give you an example, we've had proclamations to celebrate Bike Friendly Month. We've had proclamations to celebrate aging in place. We've had proclamations to celebrate a number of different national recognized days. And the most recent individual proclamation we have issued was in 2009 to an individual by the name of Patricia Yegi, who was, who was, by, by way of the proclamation, recognized for collecting and archiving city historical records that went to the Johnson County Historical Society. In doing so, that proclamation language was very specific and task-oriented for the accomplishment that was made. After I, after I completed reading that proclamation to Ms. Yegi, I, it dawned on me that this proclamation that we have here before us is short-sighted and unfair. It's unfair because it does not recognize that in this city does not have the precedent for giving proclamations to individuals who have served as mayor for a short period of time and with conflict. In the contrary, I would propose that this council amend this proclamation to celebrate the contribution of all prior elected officers of University Heights who have served either a short term or a long term. And that way, we're also able to acknowledge the objective accomplishments of Wally Heitman as mayor. And we steer away from conflicting situations such as fairness. I have a highly questionable and problematic appreciation- I have a highly questionable and problematic appreciation that he was not fair with me, and as a result, I cannot stand by this language. Yes, he was very dedicated and he was very determined, and I don't think any of us at this table would challenge those two lang, those two words. But with fairness, I highly question that. Dignity, well, you know, our, there's no dignity in obstructing access to government, and I go further and say that there's no dignity in obstructing a fellow peer colleague on council who is trying to do their job on behalf of residents and keeping them from the resources they need to accomplish that. So for those reasons, I would like to see this body consider changing the language to language that is concrete, specific, as we've done with the Yegi proclamation in the past, and that would be consistent with all the other affirmations that this city makes where we stand by core principles that don't have factual inconsistencies. So I, I wanted to bring that up for discussion at this time.
Sylvia, not that it changes the major point of what you're saying, the last individual proclamation we gave was on May 13th, 2014 with Dotte Ray Day.
Dotte Ray, correct, and that language as well was not subjective. It was for contributions to her radio program for being a resident in University Heights. Nothing to do with her character, nothing to do with virtues or qualities. It was objective, task-oriented, accomplishment-driven, and I have no, no qualms if the sponsor of this proclamation, which I, I think would be Jerry Zimmerman, would be interested in changing this to specific accomplishments that we could all agree is factually accurate for which Wally did in fact do with great diligence and with great determination. And I would say that moving us in to the space was one of his, one of his highlights of, of the joy that he had as being mayor. And if you would be amenable to that, I would be happy to support you with a vote in favor of that.
I'd like to call the question.
Okay. Well, are we gonna do any? Yeah, does anyone else wanna say anything before we? Okay.
I would, I'd like to amend the language to, to provide...
Well, we already called the question.
Well, so that's a motion for debate, and that has to be voted out, of course.
Okay, all in, all in favor to close the debate, say aye?
Aye.
No.
Opposed, say no?
No.
Okay, so the debate is closed. So we're gonna vote. Sorry, I rushed the other vote. All in favor for the proclamation, consideration of proclamation that's in front of you, thanking Wally Heitman for his service as mayor? Say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no?
No.
Okay, 4-1, so I'll read the proclamation. Proclamation thanking Wally Heitman for service as mayor. Whereas Weldon E. Heitman, Wally, was elected mayor of the city of University Heights in November 2015, and whereas Mayor Heitman took office and served as mayor with dignity, dedication, determination, and fairness, and whereas it is proper and fitting to accord official recognition to Mayor Heitman for his service as mayor. Now therefore, I, Louise Fromm, mayor of the city of University Heights, Iowa, do hereby proclaim and extend the city's thanks and appreciation for Wally Heitman for his service to the community as mayor. And then we'll make sure Wally gets this. Thank you. Now we'll go to, Pat Bauer has the zoning commission report.
As Steve's email indicated, the zoning commission kinda completed work on three ordinances, our, our review of three ordinances at our meeting a week ago. They would be post-construction, stormwater runoff, building coverage, and a subdivision ordinance. The fourth and last major thing we're working on is a sensitive areas ordinance. We canceled our March meeting because Larry, who's our prime person on that, wasn't available. We've scheduled a meeting in April with Josiah to go through the draft that we do have. And our thought was that we would bring all four together to council for a work session. I think we've had a number of meetings without legal counsel where the members of the zoning commission have educated themselves on the logic behind these, and we thought that a kind of give and take between the five of us and the six of you would be an efficient way of, of doing that. So, that's where we're at. I guess the only other thing to report is I've been in contact with Greg Stiltner, and I believe that he is planning a Good Neighbor meeting on Wednesday, March 1st, over at the University Club to present, make a presentation about his ideas for the Flom property. He's working on a flyer or a postcard that will go out, and I expect will be received by residents this Saturday or next Monday.
What's his name again?
Greg Stiltner.
I only just heard Greg before, I never, no, he gave me a last name.
Yeah. And he was here at our January meeting and made a presentation that is available in the web stream, and I think I have here, maybe, maybe not, you know, I had a draft of his flyer, but I thought I'd give it to Louise to bring her up to speed. Yes. He checked for basketball games and wrestling. I told him about that, and so I, I, the, University Club didn't mention anything.
Pat, when do you see a work session or with the council? I mean, just...
It's probably, I'm thinking June.
June, okay.
You know, after we get done with the April meeting, we're then gonna forward, we haven't been having the city attorney come to our meetings until we have, you know, legal work to be done. And so after the city engineer has provided his input, we'd probably send it on to Steve. Presumably, if Steve can make our May meeting, we would then have final sign-off on that, and then be talking about something in June with the council.
Okay, that sounds good. Are there questions for him?
Yeah.
First Tuesday in May for you, Josiah's down for the first Tuesday in April.
So Pat, are you gonna talk to Greg about March 1st? Or did you bring that up already or not?
Uh, I, I did not mention Ash Wednesday.
It was Greg who told you March 1st, correct?
Yeah, I just told him that I thought, you know, seven to 10 days was an appropriate lead time.
Yeah, yeah.
And to be on, be on, I, I did mention to him that later would create a conflict with the spring break, but I did not mention the...
Okay, I'm just...
He was sending something down to, you know, the copy shop, I don't know whether it was, I can...
Let me, let me see if we can't get ahold of City Cable, Channel 4 from Iowa City, if they can't send like a mobile team at least to record it, that we could also make that available on the web stream like we do our meetings too. That might be a possibility, Wednesday's kind of an off, I mean, hopefully that's an off night for them, cause it's not a Tuesday council meeting, so that they may have somebody... Right, it's Ash Wednesday, that's why it's an off night for them.
Yeah, uh, let me write myself in the...
If you want me to, I could contact Greg in the morning and point that out.
Yeah, just see, I mean, I think Alice makes a good point, and there'd be folks who, but I, I don't know what's on March 18th.
Um, right.
Thank you, Pat. We have the legal report, Steve?
Thanks, I don't really have much to add to my report. The agenda item that I asked to be included concerned amendments to the public records request policy. Councils heard from people this evening on that. I, I indicated in my report anticipating that there might be some discussion, that it, it may be premature for the council to vote on that. I guess my own view, it's your, it's your meeting, but my own view would be not to, not to take that up. I'm gonna take into consideration what was said tonight, I'm gonna probably make some more changes and get something out to you. If you have input for me now or at any other time, I would invite you to give me that, and maybe put it back on the agenda in March and see where we are then.
Good.
What, in that regard, I think if you could provide some guidance with what information or... I'm not sure how to go about changing what's recorded and, and to make that information more accessible. I think that will help a whole lot in every way with these requests if they come up in the future.
I'm sorry, Jerry, what's reported?
What, what, what kind of information is kept, how it's kept, and how it's accessed? What kind of database would be most efficient moving ahead?
I'd like to add a comment, and that's gonna be directed to our, our acting police chief, Chris. Chris, can you please prepare an inventory of databases that you presently have? And give us a very brief synopsis of how records are accessed, not from a, from, for a, for a potential hypothetical public request? How would that, what type of activity does it take for that database A, database B, C, D, et cetera? So that we can, so that can help guide, um, our, our attorney? I'm not too sure, Jerry, can you clarify a bit more what you want Steve to do after he receives this inventory of, of information? I would think that a local process owned by the stakeholders, which would be our chief and, and staff, they would have to determine a process for retrieving these accessing documents, retrieving them, and I think without, without knowing that, that information, I don't think we can make a good call at a very high level.
Why I suggested that Steve be involved is he's been in the middle of a very laborious process over the past six or eight months. He has a feel for the nature and the extent of the information that we might wanna have in our database, and he could inform all of us from his experience with that, how we might wanna move forward. Certainly, the exact database and how it's kept is another question, I suspect, beyond Steve's expertise and beyond Chris's expertise, and we might wanna get help with that.
Good, I still, Chris would like to see an inventory of those databases to have an idea of, of context for, for making an informed decision. Thank you.
I mean, I can give that to you now if you want it, or I could just write it up.
Write it up would be great.
Okay, anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, Chris, you have the clerk report?
Right, I sent out my clerk report and the updated rental permit spreadsheet. Really don't have too much more to add, happy to answer any questions.
Chris, are you current with all of the permits, or are you still having any difficulty in tracking down overpay?
There are two that Stan and I are working on, one is for 26 Prospect Place, and one is for 11 Lemer Court.
And how outstanding are those two?
Those were sent, notices were sent in December, I have reached out to them via mail again, and email, and phone calls, and I will be working with Stan and Steve on sending out more letters.
Right. Okay, Stan Loverman, our rental inspector, welcome.
State occupancy and what's happening at the state legislature. It appears that the city's ability to regulate occupancy as we have in the past is gonna go away. The final bill isn't out there yet, but it appears that we will have until January of 2018 to remove familial status from our occupancy standards, which will give us a little time between now and then to beef up some of our housing code, and then also to come up with a, a new way to address the occupancies of rental units in University Heights. So, something that we're facing in Iowa City also, so, um, there's been quite a bit of discussion with Iowa City legal staff and myself, so... After everything is set, we'll regroup and see what has been actually passed, and then see what we have to deal with.
And I don't need to know the details, but are there some reasonable alternatives?
There are, yeah. Um, I don't think it's fair to share in an open council meeting and tip our hand as far as what we can do, but, you know, looking at parking and room size and all that is ways to regulate it. And then there's some other very creative ways to keep it. Along with that, I think we need to tighten up some of our disorderly house, disorderly conduct standards, and with multiple charges within a calendar year resulting in revocation or suspension of a rental permit for a period of time to eliminate some bad actors if we, if that comes across our plate, so... Interesting, we've had a couple properties flip over to rental recently, so, that were long-term owner-occupied. And there are houses that I was looking forward to being in, just because, you know, I've walked by them in the community for a long time. I was very surprised at how dated they were inside, so, um, it's an interesting situation where our long-term residents, when they're turning these houses over, they're turning them over in a very dated condition, they look great from the outside, but the interiors are very dated and a lot of deferred maintenance and a lot of needed updates. So, I think it's gonna be an issue that we face in University Heights with changing occupancy and an aging population, that as these houses turn over, that, I know we heard a mayor candidate last night talk about wanting to fix up these old houses, but, um, they, they require a lot of work, so, um, it's just one of those things that we're gonna have to watch out for.
Do you have any indication that the new owners who are renting them are doing any updates on them?
Uh, one was bought as a development property, so it was brought up to a minimum standard, and all the adequate facilities were provided. Another one, they were fixing up quite a bit to make it more rentable and appealing to families, but as the, as it sat, it could have easily become a typical student rental. I mean, it was, it would not be appealing to a family, so that's something to consider as we move forward.
Any other questions for Stan? Thank you. You're going down to Jim Ryan again, right? And I guess you wanted to talk a little bit about salary review?
Yeah, I sent this out, I hope everyone, it was a request, like I said, in 2016, I think, to Jerry to say, okay, let's review these because they've been kinda sporadic, review the salary, the city salary employees, and they've been kinda sporadic. At that time, I was, last year, we did increase the salary of, of Chris and Lori, and, um, which we was approved by council, and then, I understand, Stan's was also increased. I laid those out for you to show where they are. Terry Gert was an individual who wanted to make a change in his salary status, employee's status, which Wally was working and left, as Wally left, and I, um, agreed to talk to Terry to see where we stood around this particular one. Unless Boyer, it's $30 an hour, which I can tell me when we said it and when we didn't do it, so... I don't know who he reports to, so, anyway. So I was gonna move on to Terry.
Well, I wanted to, actually, now that you brought up the issue, I'd like to bring up motion or resolution that we disclose at the next budget meeting in March, all salaried and all independent contractor information. I think it's, you know, it relates to the budget, and I know that residents do ask about salaries, do ask, and it would be nice for this information to be publicly available, so that folks have an idea of all salaried, contracted or not, line items. So thank you for collecting this information, Jim, I know it's a lot of gathering data, but it's important. I can draft it for next month.
Great.
I'll just rely on you to provide me the information.
Is there any downside to doing that, does anybody, not that it shouldn't be made public?
This is already made public to the press citizen on a yearly basis.
It is, yeah, right, it's already made public, uh, yeah, so... It's already made public, yeah, so.
And different areas, different conversations. This would be a nice location, located with your past adopted budget.
Okay, will you open that?
Yep, I'll work with you on it.
We were going to discuss Terry.
Terry, yes. Terry has been building a sector here since 2010. He would prefer to become a city employee rather than a contracted employee. A contracted employee, we pay him on a $1,500 per hour basis. Every incident is at least $2. Any incident is $7, if it's over that, it can be. We determined last year that his liability, well, he didn't have any liability. And so, we agreed to pay a premium of $1,200 per year for liability. He knew, again, what's happening.
Oh, yeah.
If he would, if he would change to city employee, and he's got a number of things at stake in security and medical employment, with his comp, he would, also, because he deals with about five other municipalities that's beside his normal job, which is the city by the city, he works with each of them on a more of a stipend basis. So, I tried to determine, started looking at what we have paid him in the last seven years, and what that average was. Now, the other piece I would add into that is, in severe, is $30 per hour. Stan can help me here. How many individuals, Stan, would you say have as many certifications and everything else as Terry?
You're going to make me champion Terry Gert?
I'm only asking the certifications.
Terry Gert is probably one of five people that have the certifications in the state of Iowa.
That he has?
That he has, yes.
So, if, would it be fair to say if Terry left, we would hire two people for some time period?
You might not even be able to hire the person that you need for electrical inspection. You would probably have to go to the state, which would have a huge impact.
Okay.
The combination, I mean, he's a combination inspector, plans reviewer, I mean, it's the full gamut, yeah.
Yeah.
And it's his birthday today, too, so.
Oh, is it? Okay. So, I just wanted to be clear on that, that we, I think we're getting a very high-quality person. I've, I mean, I've never worked with him, quite frankly, so I sat down with him to talk to him about this. So, the extra charge is, if we went to $11,000 per year, would be $22, $25, you know, with, and you can see they're all outlined here. There's $1,205 that we would have, that we will do away with, because we won't pay the insurance. And he will be covered in our policy, but that's only a $50 upcharge. His, it's a tax, it's a bit of a tax issue. Most people prefer to be a contracted employee. He doesn't. I talked to him about some of the advantages, and he still would prefer the
I did, too.
annual basis. And so, I tried to determine a number. As you can see, it's quite a bit higher, the average is higher, but on the other hand, one, we're doing what he wants, and secondly, it's been up the last couple, especially this past year because of the fact that we've had this place going on, and it'll probably be up next year in the same kind of way, and we'll be able to reap these savings. So, I, I would recommend that we go forward with this, and effective March the first.
Is that a first?
Pardon? Is that a motion?
Yeah, let's make it a motion.
I'll read.
Okay, so we can have some discussion.
Discussion.
I'm interested in knowing, because Terry is well-qualified, but he's also coming at a time that's extraordinary for University Heights. We are having commercial-grade construction, and we are also at a time where we have a peak of work that's being performed on our residential homes. So, Jim, this formula of this flat stipend that is proposed, I believe it's $11,000 annually, where are we going to make adjustments to, to address instances where we have a valley in construction activity in University Heights? That would otherwise not be captured by this flat rate salary?
Well, I think if you would look at the years where they are low, which is 2013, 2014, when I calculated those based on a $45 to $50 per hour, because I think we turned this down, that's what he'll come back and ask for, and I think rightfully so, there's been no raise since 2010. That is over $11,000. If you do that on a per-incident basis, I just took $70 into each one of those figures and said, that's how many incidents there were, and now the incident rate becomes $45 to $50, or $100. And so, even in these low periods that we had in 2012, 13, and 14, it's going to be well over $11,000.
Right, but I'm, my quest, my concern is, I want a safeguard for the city for periods of time where we don't have anything going on. As you've heard from our inspector, when these houses turn over, they turn over in a time warp, because changes have not been made. So, my comment to you is, I'd be supportive of onboarding another member of staff, as qualified as our inspector is, with some reevaluation built in to his salary to ensure that our community is at all times paying a reasonable rate of fees. I don't want him working for peanuts. I don't want him working below what his, what his qualifications would generate. But by that same token, I also understand that some of his other communities pay on an hourly basis, although he is staff, part-time, they pay for hourly. Others have chosen to pay for a minimum amount of time. I think one of them had 10 hours per week or per month as a requirement. I just want to make sure we have additional safeguards built into the onboarding.
I'm not, I'm not sure I follow the logic on your reasoning on that, Sylvia, because having the oldest average-age housing stock means, and having that housing stock not updated means that he will continue to be busy as houses turn over, not become less busy. And I think if
No, I didn't say that at all. What I said was, you know, our homes are turning over, they're turning over in a time warp. Those will require his active participation, but that's not happening all the time. And when it stops happening, I just want an assurance that the contract for this particular staff has a safety mechanism for the city to review salary, so that we're not overpaying. That's all. See, one of the, one of the things that we, that I want to remind this council is that we, we are paying, I think, a fair rate to Terry. It's an inconvenience of a rate, because he's an independent contractor, I understand that. However, it's paying for the use of his services at all times. And so, that's all I want to make sure, is that if we're getting that use, I think that's, let's pay what's fair for the services.
Words, words are important. And we're not paying him for all time. We're paying him for a period of time over which Jim's analysis finds a new arrangement might be beneficial. If that's true, what criticism do you have of Bill's?
Terry?
Sorry.
I'm sorry, Jim's analysis of this. It's not all time, it's a period of time for which his employment would be.
Well, I just wanted to make the point that with the possible proving of, approving of that state resolution or ordinance or whatever, having to do with changing of housing inhabitants, et cetera, we could be dealing with ongoing issues that Terry would need to be involved in. Isn't that correct, Stan? That, that he, his services may be ongoing and not just more time-warped. You know what I'm saying?
You could see uptick in demand for building permits for additional bedrooms and upgrades that we require, because while I would require it, it would still need to be inspected by the building inspector.
Well, and, and if they are in really bad condition, it would indeed involve, you know, a complete overhaul of the electrical, et cetera, not just, you know.
Depending on how, what changes we make to the housing code, yeah, there could be.
That's right.
Yeah, but that's, that's a little, that's a little ways off yet, yeah.
That's all. That was my question.
Is there any more discussion? Because we have a motion and second on the table. And Chris is going to read it.
Motion is to move Terry Gert to a city employee beginning March 1st.
Okay, no more discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 opposed, say no.
Terry, will you and I?
I have to abstain. Terry is going to review our plans this week, I hope, and it would be inappropriate for me to.
And I'm abstaining because I don't have enough information.
So, we have three, two, two abstentions, and two are abstained.
And my abstention has nothing to do with Terry's qualifications. I've only heard good spoken about him.
And then, Jim, you have the CD?
Yeah, on the CD, we have, I just, we have a CD that's coming due March 22nd, and I'll address that at the next meeting. However, we have this limitation at the credit union where we are at $250,000, and we keep bumping up against it. So, as Lori and I have talked, we would probably split this particular one to stay well below the $250,000 in the future. What I'm asking the council today is, we'd probably go to another credit union rather than a bank. And does anyone have any particular credit union they'd recommend, other than, I mean, I can't go to Iowa, you know, Iowa, the University of Iowa Community Credit Union. Veridian is probably the closest one around. The rates are just generally higher. I mean, we're talking a half, I mean, rates are still pitiful on all these things. But, we do get, we do get better rates at a credit union, and I think we should pursue another one, so.
And they're local.
Yeah, and they're local, so.
Everybody agreed on it.
I, I think you use your good judgment on that, Jim.
Okay. I just didn't know if anyone knew of any particular ones.
I see, yeah.
Most of us use.
Free head shake.
As long as you're not making me go out and vote for it yet.
My last item is on insurance. Our property and liability is, is due on April 1 with ICAP. I'm suggesting, after Chris and I met with him, that we move that to July 1, which is a more, also meets our budget cycle. But it also has, that's the Borkman's Comp cycle for all the insurance. And so, anytime we do it, we're going to do some extension one way or another. So, I just say, let's do the extension, and then we'll go after bids on the, on the July 1 one. Anyone have any problems with that? Okay.
No problems.
Chris, when do we? We'll need to bid this again, because between ICAP and A W WELP, so when do we do that normally?
The renewal process will start in about a month to look at it.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Anything else for Jim? Okay, we'll go to Lori. Hi, Lori. How are you? Treasurers' report, and we'll just go first, pay, oh, you want a payment of the bills, too? Because I know there's some add-ons, right? Well, Russ. Oh, oh. Well, Josiah, I mean, in Josiah's box was Russ Boyer's envelope, and I put it there, and I, and he, he's eating ramen noodles right now, he wants to get paid, so. That's his little joke. We all ate him in college, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Got to be close to him.
Sorry. Street signs, moving things to City Hall. His handwriting is difficult to read. Materials. So, it's from October 19th until this week, $2,281.
$2,281? So, that's added on to the bills. And is there anything, oh, and then Josiah was going to go over his. Thank you, Lori.
I knew you were going to cover it.
Well, we'll do the list of payment of the bills, I think. The, the bills were presented before you. Is there any objection to paying the bills?
Can we find out what the Josiah bill is about?
Well,
Or is that separate?
It's a separate.
We're going to do it separately? It's, yeah. Okay, so, is there any objection to paying the bills?
None.
Hearing none, the bills will be paid by unanimous consent. And now Josiah has an additional.
I got, I got this back. This is pay application number three from the Public Improvements Project. And it includes a couple of minor items they finished up at the end of last year. And it also includes, as I noted in my report, a partial, a partial release of retainage. We keep 5% of every payout back, the city does, for retainage, to make sure they come back and get things done. At this point, they're basically done, and so, what we did with the Iowa code, you can have a partial release of retainage. We estimated the amount of value of work left, based on the things that they bid on and how much is left. We doubled that amount, and then we're still going to withhold that retainage. And that, that'll last until the spring, when we can verify that some of this sodding and things were actually done, it takes, and it's, it's good. So, that's, that's the majority of that, is we held most of that back. So, payout three, the payment amount is $20,357.95. It was about $5,000 in, in actual work, new items, and about $15,000 in that partial release of the retainage that's being held.
Okay, so.
I move adoption of pay application number three.
Okay, motion by Mike, second by Dottie. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say no. Motion carried.
Madam Mayor, I did have a question to ask, and this one is more of a treasurer capability question. Lori, at line item number three, traffic fines from clerk of court, $6,484 were collected. Would it be possible to add parentheses indicating how many tickets relate to that amount? How do we go about determining the traceable amounts of tickets that were generated as a result of that amount?
The first thing that I would suggest you do is call the clerk of court and ask if there's any way they could, I mean, they would have the info, whether they have it in any way that's, you know, collectible or whatever, to, to answer that. Other than that, I don't know. I mean, you could, because you don't know of the ones that are issued, you don't know who, you know, sends in the check, you don't know who goes to court, gets found guilty, pays. You don't know who hasn't paid for five months, and then they finally do, or they go to get their license renewed. I don't know. I think the first stop would be the clerk of court, and that might be the last stop. I mean, except, except that you, you probably, and Chris, you know, tell me what you think, but you might be able to speak with the police department and say, can you give me an idea of what the, you know, what a typical amount of a citation is? And then make sure you back out amounts that don't go to the city. And then make sure you back out amounts that don't go to the city and then just do the math. That, you know, now there's, there's a range of.
Yeah, it'd be a pretty big, I mean, a range of averages, but I could give you an average.
That would be good.
So your interest is what the average amount per ticket is or the number of tickets or the amount of revenue generated from tickets?
Number, just the number of tickets this relates, this amount relates to.
Well, I can't give you that. I can give you the amount of tickets we issue.
For that month that this.
Right, but that doesn't reflect all the tickets. Would there be state charges that wouldn't come to us?
If, if you, if, if you got from Chris an average ticket amount, then you take this $6,000 and divide it by the average ticket amount, it'd give you a pretty good estimate of how many tickets were involved.
Well, here's what I'm getting. It looks to me like I'll drop my request to amend the treasurer report because it's a little bit more complicated. And maybe what I'll ask is if you would be kind enough to include a report and just let us know how many traffic tickets were issued for, for the period that we're reporting on.
City or state?
City.
Only city charges?
Well, let's do both, city and state, break it up.
Broken down city and state?
Mm-hmm.
Regardless, and you're saying only scheduled violations, not, not non-scheduled violations? Scheduled violations being there's a fine amount and you're done. Non-scheduled being you might have community service, you might have jail time, you might arrest, that kind of thing?
Why don't we start off with, with those two buckets and then we'll see if we want to combine them, if that would be helpful or not?
Those two buckets being within the scheduled violation?
Right, scheduled and then the non-scheduled. So probation time and then the one where you.
You want the number of non-scheduled violations, including, we, we can talk later.
Let's do that.
I still think that, as I'm thinking about it, it's easy for me to say this, but I would think that the clerk of court would have to have some basis for knowing why it wrote that check in that amount. And I would assume that basis would say it was for this misdemeanor citation.
Sure, but.
She would have the number of the citations too.
Right, yeah. Yeah, the check comes from the state because the, the clerk's office is our state employees. That's the state office.
So Chris, I don't know to the extent that you have a, a report that you generate for council that would be good to increase.
So we'll go to, is Josiah and Lori there all done? Did you have something else? Okay. We'll go to the police chief report.
One moment.
Sure.
Okay, um, so I, our internet and printers and everything have been down, so I apologize for not getting you the, the written report sooner. I put it in front of all of you. I won't add to it, but I'll get it to Chris, email it out after the fact. First thing is, I don't know if I should present this, I mean, it's really the, we talked this over as the police committee did. The proposed changes to the compensation policy. Does everybody find those? I put those out in front of you as well. I can go through a point, my point. Mostly this is reiterating council approval of the compensation policy. There's been some confusion about what is approved or is not by the council. The court time overtime pay is, I'm asking that it be three hours of overtime pay for every court appearance when an officer's not on duty. That's number one. Uh, number two, basically the change is I want to move it to every other Friday is a pay period, so that we don't have pay periods of different lengths. Number three, uh, it's the 8th and the 23rd of the month. Are the, the end of the pay periods. So it's kind of, doesn't have an equal amount of time between the two. I think it'd be easier scheduling everything to do that. Number three, um, this is how it has been, but just to clarify it, on-call time should be paid at 25% of the hourly wage, regardless of how long the officer's on-call. And then for each call-out requiring the officer's physical presence, a minimum of one hour of overtime. So if they're there for 20 minutes, they get an hour of overtime. Number four, isn't actually a change to the amount of leave officers receive, just combining it into one category because we had personal leave, holiday leave, vacation leave. I think I'm missing one other category, but just to simplify that. Number five, uh, was a slight increase in the amount of sick leave. Obviously, the officers couldn't use that on their own choice, so I wouldn't think that would be much of a, a budget concern with no payout. Um, and then this is a change to that no leave may be carried over from year to year and that no annual leave will be paid out at the end of each fiscal year. Previously, both of those were possible, I believe. Number seven goes to number two, just saying that 80 hours per pay period, making it even, right now it's 86 and a half hours per pay period. And then number eight, I already spoke to, holiday and personal leave are no longer separate categories. We have to track, we just make it annually. Before I go on to other things, do you want to ask questions about that or?
No, but I think this looks like a nice cleanup. I, I mean, I know we've done things and, and there's been reasons, but it's nice to have it all laid out and, and clean.
So I don't know if the, the police committee has to make a motion or do you want me to just go on here?
Second.
Okay, motion by Dottie, second by Mike. Discussion.
I know there's been controversy on this annual leave period, but what led to this? How much was it in the past?
I guess I'd prefer if one of the committee members spoke to the controversy, but as far as the, you're talking about the amount of annual leave offered? This isn't a change in the amount.
No.
It's simply.
Number five, number six, no annual leave may be.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
How much could be carried over in the past?
It depends on when you mean in the past. I believe it was.
Last year.
Last, when, when last year?
You said a week?
And then there used to be a substantial payout at the end if officers didn't use it. And I believe committee, correct me if I'm wrong, the consensus was you want officers to be encouraged to use their vacation time so they're on their toes, instead of allowing a payout.
You don't want to pay out. You want them to work and, and take their vacation time as they should be.
So they have a use it or lose it?
So that you don't pull it, you know, and then.
And that's what this does. This encourages that and, and reduces the payout.
And the police committee recommends this?
I spent considerable time with Chris and, uh, with Ken before him, talking about the amount of annual leave. It is a eye-opener. I mean, I, I was very surprised at the amount. I don't know of any other organization, I'm not that schooled in many organizations, but in any organization I've been in, that's not the annual leave we've gotten. And Chris explained, and I'm not taking issue with this, that, um, it is a stressful job. They need that kind of leave and it helps retain them. Given all of that, I think it's a useful thing, but it's not obvious that, um, at this salary level, with this size of a community, that that annual leave is a natural occurrence. And I just wanted to mention that, that it has been well considered. I hope the decision that we make is right. I think it is.
Other discussion? Have you to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries by zero. And then you had a note, a new reserve.
Yeah, thank you. With all the other things going on, I didn't have time to get them here tonight. I don't know if you want to wait till the next meeting when I can have them here or I can just tell you about them. We have two new, um, reserve officer applicants, James Sandifer, Sandifer and Cameron Conrad. Cameron's been a paramedic with, paramedic with the Johnson County Ambulance Service. He's well qualified, nice kid. And then James Sandifer has been, uh, working in the community a lot. He has a lot of connections and he, um, has his own private security company. He's kind of been moving away that, away from that in interest of law enforcement. Currently working at Oakdale Prison, so he has a lot of kind of experience, but hasn't been in law enforcement yet, so.
I met James today, very nice guy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What are their ages and have you done full background checks?
Yes, and they're 23 and 24. I'd have to check, but early twenties.
I'm sorry, you said 20?
I said early twenties. I'm not, I'd have to look up what their exact date is.
They've already been hired, right?
Well, it's pending council approval.
Okay, good. I just was wondering about the age question.
The age question?
Well, that's what I just said, the state can leave.
And do you legally, discriminatory otherwise?
Nobody's discriminating by just asking about age. There is no discrimination involved in asking a question and getting an answer.
Well, it's considered an illegal interview question, basically, that's all I'm aware of.
So we need a motion to approve these two reserves?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Dottie, second by Sylvia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Anything else?
Uh, the, the committee report, the only thing I have, and I've talked with Jerry too, we need to begin and I will ask Chris to send out the materials to advertise the opening for the permanent police chief. Because Chris is our temporary police chief. So we need to get that done in a timely manner. So we want to send it out ASAP.
Oh, okay. And. And this.
We have the materials, I believe, that we used the last time, right?
Mike has supplied all us the materials that you used last time and we're gonna modify those and use those. We're gonna change some of the questions, I think.
Yeah.
So you two are working on that? And you're gonna get it out before like March or?
Oh, yeah.
Like, like in the next week or two? Oh. That's good, okay. Anything else with committee or questions? Okay, we'll go on to streets and sidewalks.
Um, I have a resolution, 1709, authorizing the city of University Heights to support and endorse a Rotary Club, a Rotary Club grant, uh, renovating and enhancing Triangle Park. And I'm submitting, uh, an application. And as part of the application and the grant, I need, uh, buy-in from the, the University Heights and the council, because the Triangle Park was the third focus in our visioning, uh, project. So Rotary is interested because of the proximity with the, the hospital, the fact that, uh, you know, the major physician on Bow, Bowleged Children is, was a physician at Iowa. And, um, they wanted to be a part and contribute to the community because of the proximity of the athletic club where we meet regularly, so.
And that's your motion?
So that's my motion written out here, better than I have expressed it.
So first by Dottie?
Yes, and then.
I'll second.
Second by Sylvia. Any further discussion? Roll call both.
Haverkamp?
Aye.
Maher?
Aye.
Casada?
Aye.
Lane?
Aye.
Zimmerman?
Aye.
Carrie?
Okay, that's wonderful. So we'll go to Josiah and the engineer report. And you did the pay thing, so good, we got that done.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Maybe we get one each.
Thanks. Yeah, so resolution 1710 in my report, it, it's related to what we've talked about the last two months really regarding the visioning report and the Melrose Streetscape improvements and, probably don't recall, but last month, the NPO, they were deciding whether or not they were gonna proceed with, uh, the funding applications this year. Shortly after last month's meeting, they decided they would. And, uh, we had talked about moving ahead with putting together an application for funding for that. So, um, I've put that together and I've been talking with Jim and Dottie as a visioning chair and then finance to, uh, get the numbers on the application, uh, to match up with your, with your budgeting. This is essentially part of the application. There, there's a, there's an NPO document like this, um, fill out several pages and information and, um, costs, but it also needs to include a sketch and a location map of the project, which is what you're looking at. And, and this is basically taken from your visioning report, uh, the, the Melrose Streetscape improvements, which was your number one priority. It's adding, it's essentially turning Melrose into a, a complete street, as they call it, with bike lanes from the railroad bridge all the way up here to Sunset. As you can see, so let me just show you what you're looking at real quick. There's basically two views on this sheet. There's one at the top and one at the bottom. And I just wanted to show you that the one on the top is basically down by the old city hall by Stella's. It's a closer up view. What it shows you, and, and this is somewhat reflected in the visioning report, but not, not as much, that all the yellow is, is new paving. You're gonna have to widen the street there. That section from the bridge all the way up to just past Triangle Park and around the bend, there's not enough room on the street in order to do this and, and that was reflected in the visioning report. So this shows that that street needs to be widened and then you can see the green, all the sidewalks need to be rebuilt. And it includes, um, the brick paver crosswalks and all, all the things that were in the visioning report. What you see on the bottom, bottom half, that's sort of zoomed out, you can see down up at the upper right. That's where we were just looking in detail, but it goes all the way to Melrose, or, I'm sorry, to Sunset. And that's the section where, we talked about in the past, there's enough room on the street to just re-stripe it, get rid of the on-street parking. You'll have your two lanes, your bike lanes. And then also at George Street, from the visioning report, that was where they had a, a new crossing, brick paver crossing, mid-block crossing with pedestrian signal. The other thing that doesn't show up in here in color so much, it, it does include the lighting recommendations or, for pedestrian and street lighting along this corridor in that, in that, in this, altogether in this project. So we've got the application, that's the scope of the project, at least conceptually. And then the resolution's the third part of that. In order to turn that in, you need to have a, a official endorsement by the council. And this is the same type of resolution the city's used on past projects when they've applied to the NPO for funding. So that is where it's coming from and what's before you.
And so, uh, is there a motion? We'll put a motion on the table and have discussion?
Move adoption of resolution 1710. Second.
Okay, motion by Mike and second by Jerry. Okay, discussion.
Tell me again the funding timeline, Josiah?
This, this application that they'll be taking up this spring is for fiscal year '21 and '22.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So that fiscal year starts, I think it's October 1st of 2020. I think I noted in my report.
My ninth grader, my ninth grader will be out of high school. I just want you all to know that, to give you an idea of.
That's how these work.
Yeah.
So there's about 5.6 million in this funding round for these projects. Of course, all the NPO communities are gonna submit projects and they'll be scored and debated and, uh, bartered. But, uh, so that's this one. Later in the year, they typically, they have always had STP funds and like transportation alternative, like a different, sort of a different source. This year, that's gonna be separate. That'll be in the fall.
Right. I saw it in the brand new, and he told me they split it.
They split it. Yeah.
They don't have STP anymore, he said they have STBG.
STBG, yep.
And then this'll be more like fall than this for up, for above and.
My understanding is they're gonna talk about this in March.
Oh, they are?
Yeah.
At March?
Yeah. That's my understanding from Brad for the STBG funding. It's, it gets turned in later this month, and then I think they discuss it at their urbanized area meeting in March.
Okay.
What's our competition like for these funds?
I don't know what it's like right now.
Yeah.
I just talked a little bit to Brad.
It'd be nice to know by next council, would you mind?
Absolutely. I just haven't had enough time to.
Ah, yeah. You mean, you've been busy for twelve hours?
But I plan out, but I did talk to Brad ahead of time, and he told me they were split up. He says, I believe University Heights is, you know, he knew you were putting one in.
Yeah.
But I thought it was needed, by what he said.
Yeah, they were debating, and they decided to go ahead with it.
Well, so I do know there's gonna be another round of funding, slightly different. You can read, you know, see what happens here. You may get some funding here. They may, you may get no funding. Basically, what the request is at this point is the city contributing the twenty percent minimum, requesting the eighty-twenty match. And I think in this past, they can choose to not fund you, fund you in full, or maybe say, we'll give you half or something. And so, I don't know. When you ask about competition, obviously, everybody has a list of projects, and there's way more money than.
Right, but I just wanted to get an idea. Is it major thoroughfare improvements that are coming through in terms of our competition versus a beautification improvement type of process, which is what we have here? Or is it, you know, cables going underground, like electrical poles getting buried under the right-of-way? I just wanted to get a sense of, you know, what type of prior awards were made this year, maybe the last year? That could give us an indicator of how things might be going by 2021. I don't know.
Well, they, they do, the MPO does score it, so they have a series of questions. Because they wanna have some way to like gauge them. This project has scored well in preliminary, and I think it will score fairly well. So, from that aspect, I think, I think it just comes down to who's gonna get what and how much money's left, and who's been maybe waiting the longest. Or I'm not, I'm not sure how the negotiations go.
Exactly. Like, when was the last time University Heights had put one in? See, that plays a big part, too. And it's been a little while, so that's good.
I think there was a sort of a futile one, asking for funds on one of the non-articular streets. Was it George or something that failed last, last year? I know, because.
It's not eligible if it's on a.
I know, but.
Not arterial.
It was still, you know, it was an application and.
It might have been a, we didn't submit anything.
No, but somebody's in, I don't know.
Two, two questions for you, Josiah, and then a comment for everybody on council. On the Cozer-Melrose intersection there with the walkways and the brick, and the brick pedestrian crossings, is it possible within this design for eastbound Melrose that there's a bike box in that design? Just like there would be a bike box for westbound Melrose? But I'm thinking with westbound Melrose, more likely than where the bike box would be is you're gonna, there are a fair number of bicyclists that come in and turn left onto Cozer when they're westbound. And some way to get them up the bike lane and in front of the car traffic like a bike box would. Same thing, just thinking about, less important on eastbound Melrose, but the long term of the bike is, all those bikers that are coming down Melrose want to go to the hospital and wanna be on the north side of, the north side of Melrose. And right now, we're seeing them on the wide sidewalk, because then they don't have to turn left later in Iowa City. But is there, is there?
I would, I would say there's definitely room and time, and this is by no means a design. It's basically taking that concept and giving something so that the people know what they're looking at.
Sure. The other thing that I noticed in this is the long-debated Olive Court zebra crossing. I see by having the island there, you could have a mid-street refuge, which could, could it make it actually easier to cross there? You know what I mean?
Yeah, I looked at that briefly, draw it in.
Uh huh.
There'll be some, there'll be some options there.
I think we could have an option maybe to end up with a zebra again, just because it would be so easy to be able to refuge in the middle of the street there.
I did look at that a little bit.
Yeah.
Thought of the same thing.
Comment for all you, 2020 for this is a long ways away. I really would hope that as a council, since we've already mentioned to Melrose neighbors, that we take the upper portion of Melrose where there already is room and be looking in the next couple of months for hopefully even this summer, to be able to move that center line and at least get some of a bike lane in place. Use sharrows at both ends of that, you know, to help merge those cyclists in. But I, I think it's critical that we show that we understand that this is our long-term project.
And we can shorten it, too, if we would pay for the engineering, some of the engineering costs. And what, what was the other thing, Jim? The discussion?
Well, there's. The sign I reviewed, we wanted to shorten the engineering. The project is two hundred thousand. With that, with the two hundred thousand from matching, and you put that in another two hundred thousand, so we're locating utilities from. That's funded.
No, I know, I know it's.
And that's why.
That's why I say it's cheap to paint the part we can right now.
Yeah.
I've six hundred thousand doing just in this combo.
Yeah, oh yeah.
True.
Oh, yeah.
So, I would say if we can get, if we get the project and with the engineering in it, which does the layup, something like the mine and that. And we can determine on our own if we want to do it or not.
And there may be other sources of. Yeah.
I think, I think this is, I think this is a great proposal. I really, well done.
You know, I did wanna point out, you know, you had a number of priorities in your vision list. One of them was Triangle Park, which you talked about. That list is not included, I think, with Triangle Park. I mean, it's next to it. But the other thing that was in that report, and that we've even talked about going on, is this entryway signage on each end of town. That's not included in this. That'd be something separate you could do on your own and start on, so I did take that out. Lighting, street lighting, pedestrian lighting was a separate project. But the portion that's on this piece is included in here. And frankly, that's, that's a pretty expensive component.
Yeah.
But this location, too, so close to the university, you know, hospitals, that's attractive to a lot of, you know, Iowa City, you know, because, you know.
Having.
One boat, and you really have to get, you know, Iowa City has, you know, like six or seven, I didn't look it up again, like six boats. And so, you know, tell Iowa City, wow, that's right, into Iowa City.
That, that reminds me, Louise, I went to the Iowa City Comprehensive Bike Plan night where they were asking for people with ideas and found a whole lot of people around the map, around the hospital. So, there is a lot of interest in.
Makes this very attractive.
Yeah, yeah.
They couldn't get there, but for us.
Now, let me ask a question, because I'm looking at the eastern part where we have this white car on the image. At about that point, the envisioned program had had placed a brick inlay of, of a brick, kind of like a UH, a circular UH in the road. Is that part of that design, or did that get excluded? And who made the decision to exclude?
Yeah, I think we did, in late Josiah.
It's not part of it. It doesn't mean it can't be added, or even a separate project to be planned with this. But the, the signage, the entryway, gateway signage, however you call it, sort of needs to be decided on what you guys wanna do and don't do. So, I didn't wanna lock, lock it in, but it doesn't mean it can't be.
No, it's just that I was wondering, the vision program recommendations clearly made a demarcation in the pavement to mark UH for University Heights. And so, I'm curious to know why it disappeared or isn't included here.
And that's why, like I said, I took the gateway signage component out so that you guys.
Can decide that.
Can, can design it whenever and however.
We don't wanna limit, we don't want, by the nature of the grant, we don't wanna limit by putting something in there that we may not want.
So, you have flexibility.
Okay.
Okay.
Nice job.
Do you have, this is an electronic file?
Yeah.
Can you send that?
Okay, so the motion and second resolution, we're ready to vote. Roll call.
Maher?
Aye.
Casada?
Aye.
Lane?
Aye.
Zimmerman?
Aye.
Havercamp?
Aye.
Carried?
Thank you, Josiah. Do you have anything else?
No, unless there's questions about.
How many, how many total pavements do we have on the north sidewalk? I know you said we got seven. Isn't there sixteen?
Yeah, there's seven people signed up.
Seven, seven signed up.
Two people I haven't heard from.
Okay.
Kind of the plan was to maybe knock on a couple of doors.
Okay. If there's only two, that's, we're, we're getting better at this.
Yeah.
Good, good work.
Okay, so Sylvia's gonna talk about sanitation and some other areas?
Absolutely. In the interest of time, it's already ten PM. Here's what we're gonna do. I need to reorder what I will be presenting tonight and limit it to Resolution number seventeen-eleven and Farmer's Market update with Resolution seventeen-twelve, because we have vendors who are waiting on our decision tonight so that they can confirm their commitment to the Farmer's Market this season or not. And I will table and reintroduce ordinance two oh one and two oh two at the March meeting, if not at a later time. And if I can just have the mayor's commitment to place it soon after approval of the minutes at the next meeting, two oh one and two oh two, that would, I would be happy to do that in the interest of tonight.
Great.
Okay, so then.
Excuse me, which one was that?
The chickens.
Oh. Urban chickens.
Urban chickens and competition and city contracts. All right, so we're left with Resolution number seventeen dash eleven, which is University Heights, a welcoming community. The purpose of this meeting, of this resolution, is really to be in solidarity at a, at a national level and local level and state level that we really need to work on turning a new page, turning a new chapter. I know that analogy was used last night often. And it's nice to have aspirational words. Let's put it in writing. And let's see if we can't work on, on a resolution that takes the best of our, of our community in terms of aspirations and make it a goal. And so, I looked at what other cities are doing to, to have a welcoming community statement. And this is what I found. Whereas our community's success depends on making sure that all University Heights residents feel welcomed and safe. And whereas new residents are a vital part of our community, bringing fresh perspectives, new ideas and contributions. And whereas we honor the spirit of making our community the kind of place where diverse people from all around the world feel valued and want to put down roots. And whereas regardless of where we are born or what we look like, we are University Heights residents, united in our efforts to build a stronger community. And whereas by recognizing the contributions that we all make to create a vibrant culture and community, we make our community more prosperous and more inclusive to all who call it home. Now, therefore, the city of University Heights does hereby affirm its commitment to welcome new residents and those that visit our community, and call upon the people of University Heights to join together to build a stronger, united community by welcoming our neighbors and those who visit our community. I thought that this language modeled many of the statements that were made from last night, just by sheer coincidence. I didn't stay up all night drafting this. It's been in the works for a couple of, a couple of days. And so, I just thought it would be appropriate to bring to my colleagues at the council table.
I have a.
You moved that? I saw, I saw move.
I have.
Second, okay.
The second by Jerry? Okay, discussion. Oh, it was Jim, sorry.
I have a comment.
Yes.
And it's mostly editing comment. I think it's a good idea to have a statement like this. I would edit it by taking out the paragraph three and paragraph four and, and making it more, I think maybe you've said enough in the other statements without that. I think it's repetitious and redundant, and it almost marginalizes. I, I don't think it's necessary at all. I like the idea of having a welcoming, a welcoming resolution. But those are my editorial comments.
Does anyone else feel the same or not the same?
I, I have. As a matter of principle, I'm in business, and I think in politics, I'm against these aspirational statements without, without operations that support them. It's easy to say this thing, these things, it's hard to put them in effect. Once you say them, they often, that's it. If you say them and you have some actions that go along with them, way more powerful. It's not that I don't want a community like this, I do. But I think we should specify some actions that the council and possibly the city will take in order to make this happen, rather than just say them in the law. It's called precatory language. It's meaningless without operations that support it and push these ideas forward.
Well, thank you very much for that comment, because I'd like to propose that the mayor's first communication to the citywide departments would be to share this resolution with them and to ask them to read this resolution and to bear this resolution in mind as they render services to our residents and with particular care to our UHPD as they interact with residents and individuals who visit our city. I think that's a start, and there's no reason to fail this resolution on, on the fact that it is aspirational. But you have to start somewhere. And I think that by having the mayor make this a public statement to all the departments as administrator that she is, I think that would be an appropriate step to making it concrete.
I would suggest that she make the statement to the departments, have them get back to her about operations that can be considered, and put it all into one resolution.
Some of these, I think, another concern to follow up on your comment, Jerry, is that some constitute promises that we cannot follow through on without programs in place to implement them.
Other cities have adopted this resolution, I'm surprised.
No, I was gonna say, I'm, I'm okay with this. I, I'm not gonna wordsmith it. I, I completely agree with the ideas. I think that, I, I like the idea of making sure that not only do our departments know this and that we do this, but I, I would hope that we would always abide by these as, as we hold our own public meetings. So, I, I don't have any problem approving this tonight. And I think that if we work through the operation, I don't know that they necessarily have to be together. But I think that, I think that we've expressed that. And I think I'm pretty used to Louise following through with what she says she's gonna do. So, I think I'm okay.
So, I call to question, call the question order?
Okay. Let's see, so first like discussion, is there any? Yeah, yeah, does anybody have any more discussion?
I do. Well, I think I have had a discussion about, I, I think.
Yeah, right, so we have to have a motion to close debate.
I motioned, yeah. We need a second.
So, who made the?
Sylvia, call the question.
Is there a second?
Sure.
Okay, there's a second. Okay, all in favor, we have to then vote on. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
One, two, two? And all opposed, say no?
No.
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 Okay, so more discussion.
I just, thank you very much for leaving discussion open. Mike, I, I believe in the idea too. I hope as much as you do. But I think it's way more likely to be acted on if we associate it with some actions. And as in my experience, always, that aspirational language linked to actions is way more effective in the long run and in the medium term than just aspirational language.
Well, I, I, I very much appreciate your comments, but they sound aspirational for operations. Do you have a little bit more to share on what aspirational operations you'd like to see, Jerry? Because we need a little bit of guidance.
I didn't say aspirational operations. I meant, I said, operations to support the aspirations. What actions can we define, can we take so the community knows we're serious about these aspirations? Precatory language is not usually very effective in changing or leading behavior.
Does anyone else wanna discuss it? Okay, so.
I think I would, I'm gonna vote for this, but if, if it's gonna move forward and be more than just ten minutes of our time, it does need some operational points that Jerry brings up. And frankly, I'm gonna look for Sylvia and since she's made one suggestion already with the mayor, and if there's others, then we ought to be thinking about those. But I don't, I don't wanna try to dream all the operations up before I make-
I don't either. It's just a, it's, I think that we can take some prudent, reasonable steps. And I think the, the elected officer that's most appropriate is the city administrator, which is the mayor. The mayor has, what is it? The UHPD reports to the mayor, clerk, treasury, every number of different departments that are resident facing, face the mayor. So it makes sense that the mayor, in her discretion, pass along this resolution and ask staff to read and maybe comment to satisfy Counselor Zimmerman's request for concrete ideas of implementing.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Casada.
Aye.
Lane.
Aye.
Zimmerman.
Abstain on the basis there's a want of operations to affect these aspirations. I am for it in principle, against it in the way it's formulated.
Havercamp.
Aye.
Maher.
I'll abstain. Um, I, I think it needs to be edited so that we don't make vacant promises. And I, I think it's a good idea to circulate the idea to the staff. And, and if they were to edit it, to change some of the, the language, I'd be comfortable with that. But, and I don't think I'm wordsmithing. I, I think I'm, I'm pretty aware of what the message is. And it, I think we need to have input before, and it needs to be modified. So I will abstain. And I would welcome the opportunity to rewrite it. I mean, I'm offering that.
It already passes three, two. You abstained.
So I will.
Shut up. Yeah.
All right, well, thank you very much for pointing out the points of controversy. Thank you. So paragraph three and paragraph four for Donnie Maher.
And, so I bet farmer's market will go faster.
Yes, it's gonna go faster. We, right now, have a list of, of re, repeat vendors who are eager to come back to University Heights. But most importantly, I am eager to share with you that we are a very lucky and fortunate city to have a good neighbor in the University of Iowa Athletic, the Athletic, well, it's the University of Iowa facilities. They have, again, loaned us the premises so that we can start in mid-May and go through mid-September. And this time, based on vendor feedback and some, and some customer feedback, we are going weekly on the farmer's market. So the arrangement is weekly and it is from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM for public sales and four to five PM setup time. I do have some suggestions that I'd like to get consensus from council tonight. And that is that our vending fee should be $5 per stall or as arranged with the market coordinator. And that would be to entice certain vendors that may not have a, may not see it as a profitable venture to come to the market at $5 a market. So I'd like to remove the $5 barrier for them so that they can come and offer their, their items for, for, for market. Additionally, in lieu of trying to find corporate vendors, which were extremely generous in the last season, I'd like to have a free vendor stall for music pedaling, which is offered in larger markets throughout different cities in the US. So it's called a music gig stall. So Mike, I don't know if your group is looking for a gig, but there's a free stall and you just need RSVP. So the city website page would have the, the vendor rules, which are not, not released yet. And so I'd like to post those up as soon as possible. We have a very nice list of core vendors from last season coming this time around. And folks are asking for more, more competition and food vendors. So that is still an area that I'd like to work with Louise on obtaining additional food vendors. And I will work with her on some of the limitations I have discovered. But in any event, I do wanna thank again the Athletic Club for loaning us their premises. And number two, word is getting around that this farmer's market is, is probably a viable option west of the river. So it's really, really good to hear this time around. I also, this time around, save your flowers and plants because we are going to have Pleasant Valley Garden House with us as a vendor. So that's the, that's the greenhouse, actually the plant store on Gilbert that closed. And their vendor gal, Laura, is coming to be a vendor at our market. So I'm really excited for the season. And that's it. That's the summary.
So you have consideration of Resolution Number 1712?
Yes.
So you-
And that's for, I'd like to motion, yes, adoption of 17-12, establishing vending rights for every Tuesday from May the 19th through September the 19th from 4:00 to 7:00 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Okay, discussion, roll call vote. Wait, wait, no, I'm just zooming it. I'm sneaking it in there.
It's 10:25.
I did try really hard.
It's 10:25.
Well, I just don't see any justification for this. We had, we've had it now for three years on a once-per-month basis. I think you had it too, Louise? And, and you've had it, uh, one.
It almost didn't happen because, you know.
I know. And I'm not sure that was a good idea for it to happen. I see attendance draining, waning. I mean, I, to me, it's not an event that, you know, I thought we, I thought we ought to take a break on this thing and decide whether or not what's gonna happen around this. So I'm, I'm very, as I watched people, I didn't get to all of them, but it, the vendors in the last group was, was hardly any. It went down and down. We had, we had no numbers. You produced no numbers. I have no idea what it's doing. The good thing is you've gone off and you, you've kept it off, basically off the books. I mean, and asking for money this year is, is, is not a huge amount. So I'm not worried about that. I just wanna make sure it's an event we wanna do. I think taking a break, coming back next year when we have, or the following year when we have this facility up and running on both ends, which would produce more people.
It's really hard to take a break.
That's right.
Well, I, I recognize that, Louise, but-
Take a break especially.
The vendors.
Right.
Well, you have vendors in line, right?
Yes, they're, they're already lined up.
So maybe this should be just another try, you know, a trial because they grow year after year.
The biggest critique from the vendor, you're right, is that we don't have it frequently enough. And that we, you know, we started off as a strong farmer's market with all Louise's good help, but then we, the farmers were missing from the market. And all sorts of commentary was coming into that effect. This time around, we've got two farmers coming to the market. Last year, we had one. This year, we have an entire nursery coming to the market. Last year, we didn't have a nursery. We had flowers that were being sold. This time around, we're adding. We've got poultry, we've got eggs, we've got vegetables, we have baked goods, we have crafts. I mean, what else?
And maybe once a week will really help it because when it's once a month, people kind of forget which date it is.
That was the strongest criticism.
How much staff is it gonna take and what else are we gonna do around that? I, you know, I mean, once a week is quite often, folks.
Do you wanna help?
No.
You can volunteer.
I do not wanna help. I don't wanna also get an email at five o'clock saying, would you please pick up the sign at seven? So these are the things, not well-managed and not haphazard. And I'm just, I'm just concerned that we're gonna pick, we're gonna take up a thing for every week and trying to figure out what, what's gonna happen on this particular-
I already spoke, listen, I, I wanna be very clear. Last year, there was a small group of volunteers that helped. They helped at different points of the market. You take your volunteers as you find them. You don't dictate to them because you don't pay them. You take their generosity to help, their willingness to help, and I accepted that. There were limitations, but certainly nothing disastrous and certainly nothing that stayed well beyond unreasonable hours. Number two, I pushed the, the calendar to go all the way to October to get pumpkins. I thought that was the only adventurous risk that I took last year, was to bring pumpkins to University Heights Farmer's Market. It wasn't a well-received market item, so this year, we're ending sooner, September the 19th. But it's still an amenity. And you heard last night, I think one of the candidates made it very, very clear that more amenities are needed in our community, such as the farmer's market and, you know, maybe a truck night to be brought into the city. So people are already thinking of amenities, outdoor amenities in particular, to make our city more interesting. And I think the generosity of the Athletic Club should not be dismissed. I think we need to try it again at a different frequency and then take an assessment. You never shared with me that you needed a tally. And by the way, who's gonna do the tally? I'm busy making sure that vendors are in the right place, musicians have everything that they needed, generators are lined up. I don't have time to be counting how many people come and go, nor am I a statistically reliable reviewer of that information. So if you would like to help, please sign up with an element that is of particular interest to you.
I am not gonna help, Sylvia. I'm not, I don't have that kind of interest. But I think keeping track of the number of vendors is not a very difficult piece to do at all.
No, they're, everything that they submitted was there.
Well, I mean, did we not decline in vendors as, as the time went on? It certainly looked like that to me.
Well, that's, yeah, well, you know, waxes and wanes. I can't control them. Some of them didn't show up, some of them would.
If I, okay, um, I am one of those vendors. And I think we were the busiest vendor at each of the markets. And sometimes less is more. And I think the every week is overkill. I think unless the participation and the attendance increases immeasurably, it will not be a good experience for either vendors or attendees. And I think your analysis that we should charge less per stall because there's more interest doesn't compute. If there was really that interest, you wouldn't charge less. You would charge more. That's what every other farmer's market does, and we've been to a number of them. The one on Wednesdays in Iowa City has not been particularly good midweek. It gets better, but it's not nearly what it needs to be. We don't attend that anymore because it doesn't have the attendance that we need. And I, I, I think in this case, less will be more. And if you put the days and the experiences at a premium where, where parents and kids wanna come out and come to it, I think it will be a much better experience for everybody.
So you're thinking once a month?
Once or twice a month at the most.
I mean, I say that because Jerry used to say, have the market more on it. I mean, you-
For us, we, we, we do great there. We do great, well, not great, but we do well there. But other vendors, you, they complain there and they are discouraged there. And they're not, they're not a whole lot of participants.
I saw keeping the price low, like $5 encourages vendors to try it and venture. I mean, they said, boy, what a deal. I'm so glad that you have such a reasonable price market. I found that they liked that.
But if they're, I like that too. You didn't charge residents of University Heights. I like that.
But you did make donations.
We did, we did.
I gotta say that.
Right. But if the business was there, they'd be happy to, happy to pay up. And I worry that it's gonna dwindle. It's gonna, there's gonna be a bad taste in people's mouth, that's all.
Well, we already risked that reputation the first time it launched at the Athletic Club. I talked to 110 different vendors and very few wanted to come to University Heights. That's just the word on the street. And so you gotta, you gotta trust me on that. It's the data I had to work with. Number two, this is year two. I have now more people who want to join and who are waiting for tonight's council meeting so that they can decide whether they want to come in at 30 miles away from this location to our market or not. And for them, the viability point is every week as opposed to less. It's just not worth it for them for gas, money, prep time. And many of them, they're coming in from different locations.
What types, what types of your market?
Oh, well, we have eggs, we have poultry, we have plants, we have-
Produce.
Pro, well, the farmers. We have two farmers, if not three. And those-
Those folks need to prep. And they prep early in the morning. So, yeah, arts and crafts some, but not a whole lot. Jase, you wanna comment? Do you wanna come up to the microphone?
I'm supposed to talk really close.
Jase Humphrey, 27 Prospect Place. So we come to the farmer's market every month because it's an event in our house. My currently nine-year-old enjoys it. Instead, except for last year. So as we went every week or every month, it got less and less vendors. When my nine-year-old looks at me and goes, why did we come? Because there was nothing that interested him. And I'm not the only family that was that way. I was boycotting you at that point. But you know that. So, so if there's no, it's supposed to be a family event. That's what we marketed it as originally to the community. It was something to get the families out to it. If you're offering it every week and the vendors you got, I'm, I'm sorry, if you're selling flowers, it's not gonna interest half of our community or half of our, the, the young families. Without, Jackson is concerned with, what is there sweet to eat? My daughter is concerned with, is there good produce? My wife is concerned with, does it get me out of cooking for a night? Or does it mean that I don't have to cook so she doesn't have to listen to me complain? So those types of things are great and wonderful. We didn't see that last year at the market. So that, that's my concern with, if we up it to every week, I think you're going to see it become something that is less of an event and more of, it's the same vendors, there's not really anything I want there. And it's gonna dwindle and that's gonna stop the vendors that are there from coming. And you're going to see a decline. That's just my opinion, speaking from, you know, my family and the families I've talked to.
John, you wanna make a comment?
John McClure, 415 Cozer. I didn't hear, what was the day of the week?
Tuesday. Because we can't do it on Monday. Coralville has their, theirs on Monday. And they charge $6 an entry fee for their, for their, for their stalls.
And the time?
Oh, the time is from 5:00 to 7:00, which is different than last year, which was 4:00 to 7:00. So we're taking an hour away and we're leaving it from 5:00 to 7:00, two hours.
Right. Well, I guess the thought occurs to me, you know, we got city council on Tuesdays. And then we sometimes do a special meeting. And one of the days that works best is a different Tuesday than the normal city- different Tuesday than the normal city council night. So, it's just, it seems like you're kind of stretching things. I don't know, you know, for, if Chris has to be here at the city council meeting, and is there police presence at the farmer's market? You know, you don't have to answer that, but it's just my thoughts, anyway. Thanks.
I was, I was thinking city council meetings on the road, John. That was more what I was going, you know, that sit out in a round, hot parking lot. That'd...
Now, there, there's no question that farmer's markets are attractive, and people like them. And if we have the kind of vendors that people want, and if it's publicized, and if the city wants to make an investment in publicizing it, that's how I would go about changing it and increasing the, the number of days per month. If we remain the same, in terms of the number and the kind of vendors, and we don't publicize it, I think you do the same thing, you get the same outcome.
That's right. That's why I'm doing something crazily different. I am asking for budgets to work with.
Six fifty.
Right, six fifty for signs and for advertising. Number two, we're including new vendors.
And, and I, I think the advertisement and getting the word out broadly is really important. But to have the vendors in your pocket, so that we can advertise those and draw people here.
That's right.
And...
That's why I was very, very happy to hear that the nursery, which is the, I keep forgetting the name, Pleasant Valley, Pleasant Valley, agreed to take a risk on an unknown, like the University Farmer's Market.
Yeah, but, but the...
That's just an example of one. I'd like to see who else is going to come on board.
If, if this is, if this is going to be successful, and if the city and the council want to invest in making it so, six fifty isn't enough to publicize this well, and get the word out, and assure its success.
All right, then, do you want, do you want to offer the, and double the budget? You'll have to talk to Jim this, do you?
I just think we need an idea, and I, I'm, I'm, I'm not disagreeable about this. If we do the same things, it's just going to end up the same way. So, we may want to move ahead, and I can understand that, but we have to assure we get the vendors, assure we publicize it, and assure, to the extent possible, that we bring people in. As a vendor, I'm not sure we'd be there every week, and we did very nicely, that we, you know...
Well, yeah, and, and I lost my taco truck, because you did so well, so I was going to propose something different this time around. So, you know, there's, there's options, and that nothing is, I don't do things twice the same way.
And that may be our advantage, if, if we did weekly, that you would have different, I mean, especially with food vendors, that may, you may want some rotation, some staples and some rotation.
Exactly, the exclusivity that we're...
Have you approached any food trucks?
They're on the list.
Yeah, I guess, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just going to say, is there any way we could approve, well, I guess we can.
That's why we're approving the resolution tonight for vending.
To see how many people we can really corral, you know? If, if I saw a list of eager vendors, I'd be more inclined, you know, to support.
Well, you were part of the...
I think it's a chicken and egg issue, Dottie, not to use a bad metaphor, but until, until we approve something, we're not going to get vendors that commit.
That's right.
I'm sorry. I've been waiting all night for a chicken joke, and we pulled it off, we pulled it off the, I...
No, no.
I think otherwise, this, you know, the tone here is, it's preposterously high, because everyone is removed from the details of what it takes to organize. Dottie, you were part of soliciting people from the university, from Iowa City?
Yeah.
And you, you saw how many envelopes we distributed every weekend, trying to draw...
Trying to find a coloch, because it was...
Colachi?
Yes.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, we tried all sorts of different, different approaches. They're different, and they're new. And my, my point is, is that we're getting finally visibility, and that matters in this business.
I will support this, and I understand the concern. I guess I hadn't read the proposal that closely before tonight, to realize we were going weekly. I, the location is not ideal, just because there's not a lot of shade, but I understand, I mean, if we're not going to go monthly, you almost have to go weekly, because going every other week is, is absolutely the worst, because then, then you truly do, you truly do frighten everybody. But I think, Sylvia, if, if this gets approved tonight, you know, please come back next month, and, and let us, let us know that you have people, and, and that, that here's who we've got, and that, that we can start really publicizing it seriously, because that will, that will be what's helpful for all of it. But I, but I understand, we have to have success beget success, and I think that I'm, I'm willing to throw the dice on this, and, and see what happens, because I, you know, before we moved here, we lived a block from the Iowa City Farmer's Market, and we were there all the time, and I, I, I think it is one of the things that can help build community.
Right. And one of the things, too, that I do want to close by saying is that, you know, last year, it, you know, two weeks before I reported to council, that there was going to be no farmer's market, because we didn't have a location, and the ex-mayor did not support the proposed location.
Are you talking about me?
No, this would be the...
Ex-mayor. I'm like, was I the ex-mayor, or am I the mayor?
Can't keep our ex-mayor straight.
I'm just like...
Okay, ex-mayor number two.
I got it.
Yes, so, he, he had a very strong opinion, but essentially, I don't think, we need to start exploring with location, but not this year, not without disturbing the market. We need to build a reputation, build a market base, and a vendor base. And then the next place that I thought would be a very, I think there's other alternatives within University Heights that we can look into. They still involve asphalt and concrete, though, Mike, but if you're willing to throw the...
Which is fine if we have shade, too. I mean, it just makes it hard.
All right, so anyhow, ready for the vote?
I have one more comment.
Okay, good.
We need a success criteria. I'm tired of listening to, we ought to do this and that. I want to know how many vendors would represent success on a per-year basis, and how many people would represent success? Because I, my view was, it was not successful last year, okay? But others are saying, you know, you're all excited about it, and so, I'm not saying excited, but you're talking about it. But we need to, we need to quantify what that is. And so, I think Sylvia needs to come back to the, to the council, even if we approve, even if we approve this with, before May, whatever it is, this is what success looks like. Am I going to hold it right to the fire? No, if it's ten versus nine, or something like that. But we've got to track this thing, because my gut is, it's not very good, and it takes a hell of a lot of work. You're going to have a hell of a lot of work doing it every week.
I was about to say, the work really fell on my shoulders, Jim.
I know it did.
So, I appreciate you being protective, but I can really manage my weight, and manage, shoulder the responsibilities. I delivered for every Tuesday that I was involved in that farmer's market.
I, I know that, Sylvia. I'm not saying you can't, but, but we're doing, you're doing it...
All right, so I'm not too sure what the pessimist, I, I just want to know what, what's, what's so wrong about something you didn't work on? What is so wrong with something that you did not risk your name or your credibility out there for? I want to know, and you're telling me right now, and I appreciate that. However, I think very differently about what a farmer's market is. Farmer's market is a community event, first and foremost, and I was, and I was very pleased with the changes that were revolutionary. We moved from a traditional historical location that was shaded, that was well-liked by all of the local neighbors, to a new area that was an asphalt, you know, an asphalt environment. Different circumstances, different things. And I, and it was, it was a rough transition. Things were missing, I inherited zero records, nothing to work with, so that made me responsible for touching base with over a hundred vendors, and getting them to tell me why they wouldn't come to our farmer's market. And that's how I learned the perception that Zimmerman talks about since yesterday, about how important perception is. Well, I know very much what the perception is, and I'm letting you know, as a professional peer of yours, that we need to build up, instead of tearing down this community event, because it only stands to get better. And the third thing that we can do is change location at a later time, but not quite yet, it's not mature yet.
I want to know what you think will be success this year, and, and I'd like to have that in writing.
I, I, I've told you what I think success is.
Well, you talk it. I want it in writing, Sylvia.
You saw it last year, and I'm not going to put anything in writing.
I never saw anything last year.
You know, are we...
There was not, this was a zero-budget line item last year, so I don't know what you're talking about.
Well, we're going to have a roll call vote right now. Oh, you're going to make one more?
Yeah. I think that there are metrics that are very easily discernible.
You can, you can come up with them. You're the educator, you can track them.
No, no, this, this doesn't have to be contentious. I'm trying to be helpful. Nobody's volunteering you. There are, the vendors know what kind of revenues they're bringing in, week one, week two, week three, week four. It's relatively easy to get that information, if they're interested in continuing the market. That's number one. If vendors, if you start losing vendors over time, you know it's not being successful, probably, or the vendor isn't being successful. You have to make that determination. The other thing is, if there are crowds of people, and there were crowds of people initially, when this began three years ago, or four years ago now, whenever, I'm not sure if it's location, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure why, but it was different, and it might have been location. So, I think there are easily discernible metrics. I think it's a really worthwhile community event, but if we're going to do it every week, we all have to invest the time and money to make it successful. I mean, I'm, I'm for farmer's markets, right? It, it, it's just that we need the investment to make it go well, that's all.
And I just want to make one comment, as far as the sunshine is concerned. I think last year, I suggested that we go down to Arrow Rental, and rent the big, big tents, like they have, you know, Football Day, and offer some...
Those are like five at six hundred dollars.
I know, but if we're going to put, if we're going to make it work, we should put the money in it, I think. I mean, I'm, I'm all for doing it, but I want to, to really provide something that won't be an argument on behalf of a prospective vendor, that's all.
I think it's worth the experiment, but it, it's going to take the investment of time and money to make it successful.
I just want to be clear, that I provide information, but I will not commit to reporting. I am your peer, and I respect your opinions, and I don't request anything that I don't think is unreasonable.
Sylvia, you ask everybody to provide every bit of information that you want. It's unbelievable that you say you will provide it.
That's because I bothered to care enough to ask. Jerry, if you don't like it, I will stop asking.
No, 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 Jim did ask.
I did ask, and you refused, Sylvia. That's what, that's what concerns me.
No, you told me I had to do this.
You know, let's just go to the roll call vote.
I asked the council, I asked the councils to move for a success criteria.
Yeah, well, let's just go on for the roll call vote, because this isn't constructive. Okay, go.
Lane.
No.
Zimmerman.
Aye.
Havercamp.
Aye.
Maher. Casada.
Aye.
Carried.
Carried's poor one. Okay. Now, we'll go to E-Government.
I don't have anything. My report's my report, but I, I do, I think, as, as John mentioned, I, I'm still concerned about sound, and making sure everybody talks close to a mic. We're, there are two levels in the room. There's the recording level, and then there's the room level, and I think our recording level is good, and, but it's our room level that we need to play with. The other thing is, what do you think of the U? I think we're, we're tight, you know, we don't want to exclude Lori at all, and I, I want to make sure that that's on, I worry about the people that are on the end of the table, like Josiah or Jerry, tonight. I'll probably, I'll send an email to everybody, and just say, "Are there suggestions or things?" I think for a discussion, it's better for us. I'll probably, the hardy souls that stuck it out to the end will probably get an email from me, too, is, "What's it like to sit in the audience, in terms of this versus a flat line?" Because I worry about stuff like this, and, and what we can do. So, thanks, thanks, speaking of change and putting up with things, but we'll see where you go from there. That's all I had.
Move for adjournment?
Uh, is there any objection to adjournment? Hearing none, the meeting's adjourned by unanimous consent.